Stay tuned for a meeting of the Calabasas City Council. The meeting will be broadcast using Zoom and the city CTV Channel 3. Members of the city council may teleconference into the meeting without noticing or posting an agenda at their teleconference location. Besides the live TV and Zoom broadcast, the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at cityofcalabasus.com/ctvlive. If you want to provide public comment, press raise hand if you're using Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone. Just unmute yourself by pressing star six. Say your name and the city you live in, you'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. If the power or internet goes out lasting more than fifteen minutes, or if there's some event that prevents the council from meeting or prevents you from providing public comment, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be rescheduled to the next regular meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Now, a meeting of the Calabasas City Council.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the August 24th, 2022, City Calabasas to order. I'm Mary Sumauer, the mayor of the City of Calabasas, and this evening I'm joined by Mayor Pro Tem David Shapiro, council members James Bizagian, Alicia Weintraub, and Peter Crowe. And this evening, the pledge of allegiance will be by Manny Fernandez, representing the Calabasas Rotary Club.
Very good. If we may all face the flags, stand, and put your hands over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Manny, and we'll see you in a few minutes for your presentation. I wanted to welcome all the people that are attending this evening. It's exciting to see so many people take a role in the decision-making of their city council. There are a few changes to the, to the meeting this evening I'd like to announce. First of all, we're modifying the order of the agenda to move item number seven, Parks, up a little further in the agenda. So if you are aware of somebody that you are expecting to come and make a comment or watch, please let them know that we'll be starting sooner than the agenda states. Also, in addition, we are going to be postponing the discussion of Freedom Park. So this evening we'll just be discussing the three parks. We're asking members of the public wishing to speak on number seven, which is the Parks item, to try and keep your comments to one to two minutes. We have so many people and we really want to hear from everybody and allow ample time for deliberations. We will allow three minutes if you represent an organization. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Crowe.
Aye.
Councilmember Bizagian.
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Shapiro.
Yes.
Mayor Maher.
Yes.
Carrie's five zero.
Let me turn to our city attorney. We met in closed session this evening. Is there anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session to consider two items. The first regarding potential initiation litigation. The second regarding conference of legal counsel regarding existing litigation. Case named Weston versus the City of Calabasas, Federal Central District of California, case number CV 223788. And provided direction to staff and council and took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start off with several presentations, short presentations this evening, and we're going to start with the Rotary Club of Calabasas and their year-end report. Welcome again. Manny.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Council. So this is going to expand from the presentation I made in January relative to the Rotary Club and our administration of the city partnership agreement, which is highlighted by our Neighbors in Need program and Community Grant Program. So I believe we have a PowerPoint to go along with my presentation that I hope we can get running.
Let me get it up. One second, please.
Thank you, Mari.
Why don't you tell us when the Rotary Club meets?
All right. Yeah, so the back, so background of the Rotary Club, we were founded in nineteen eighty-eight in the City of Calabasas. We currently meet on Tuesdays for lunch at La Paz when we have our in-person and hybrid meetings. And that's three Tuesdays of the month. And it's approximately hour and a half, and it's a great opportunity to find out all the activities that are going on in the city from a charitable standpoint relative to our outreach programs, some of which I'm going to describe herein. So available, please join us.
Great. Can you see the screen? Because we can.
Yeah, I see it. It's all up there. Thank you so much. Okay, so if you would go to the next slide. So the Neighbors in Need program basically entails giving aid to Calabasas residents who, due to unforeseen circumstances, have difficulties in meeting their financial obligations for rent, mortgage, utilities, food, clothing, and medical expenses. Next slide, please. And along with these, we started this year the outreach grants, which are small grants that are more geared towards food, clothing, utilities, school expenses, and transportation, because we found there is a need for families, specifically those with some students in Calabasas schools that were having some issues. So we created this program that we basically launched spring this year. And in concert with the Neighbors in Need program that goes back to 2007, we've made some good strides in expanding our outreach. Next slide, please. So how we were able to do this this year is that we've been getting the word out in ways we had not before. So we've expanded our outreach with promotional materials through the school counselors, the sheriff stations, the senior center, and of course, City Calabasas themselves. Thank you for distributing our materials. And we are going back to add the local apartment complexes and mobile home park where a number of our historical recipients have been in the past. We've always had an issue of rightsizing our promotions to our budget from our support from the city and be able to make an impact. And in the fiscal year 2021, we under-delivered in that area for a myriad of reasons, and our goal for this fiscal year is to make great strides in getting more aid out to more people. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we've had this partnership agreement with the city since July of 2007. We've helped over a hundred and four different families in that timeframe. And since I spoke to you in January, we've been able to help eight families so far in the first six months of 2022, which is up from six in all of fiscal year 2021. So a great impact. Most of that has been because we've been able to award five of the outreach grants and three of the emergency grants for neighbors in need. So the outreach grants has started off to be a very important program. Next slide, please. This is the promotional material that we've distributed through all the local Calabasas schools. You guys have some of these at the city council. And it lets them know that at our website, they have online access to the various grant applications, details of the program. The outreach grant is $500 or less for the expenses that we mentioned. Emergency grants typically have been $2,500 grant maximums as a one-time dispersment and support grants are $2,500 to $3,000 usually distributed over one, two, or three months, again, depending on the situation of their needs. Next page, please. So one of the things that we are doing to get out the word to the apartment complexes, the mobile home park, is making flyers available, not just in the rental offices, but also in their posting boards at their local, I want to say, community center areas where they put up public announcements. Over the years, the apartment complexes and the mobile home park has been where a lot of our inquiries have come. Also, over the years, the community center, which many, many years has been a very big resource for us, has been a good entree for a lot of inquiries. We're hoping that we will be able to have a nice program there again, once the status of the Agora Community Center is taken care of. Next place. So if you go to the website, anybody who's interested in finding out more, there's very easy to navigate situations here. We just click the thing in the middle. It says, request financial assistance, and it brings you to the website that describes all the programs. Next, please. And these are the click links that they will see that finds out all the specific information. There's downloadable applications with the descriptions of the specificity of the particular programs, and the outreach grant is, it's meant to be something you can be taking care of very, very quickly. There's actually an online application for that. Next, please. You know, and one of the things that's important for council to know and the effectiveness and the thanks that we get for this program. We get many, many heartfelt thank yous from the residents. Two of the most recent ones, somebody penned us an entire poem for the thanks that we were able to allow them to have two months of additional residence at their location before having to vacate, so they give an opportunity to do so measured and timely matters opposed to just being evicted. And then from families, there's a lot of single parents whose support dries up, and they have children to take care of, and these are just some of the many thank yous that we have. Next, please. So, you know, overall, I'm very happy to report that we are looking to not just expand the number of people, but there's a financial reality of since the inception of the program in 2007, the cost of living and the nature of the need has been apparent. And this has become very obvious to us because we get so many requests for secondary aid from some of our historical primary recipients, which of course, at this time, we can't entertain because of the necessity to keep the program available to multiple people and not the same people. But we are very cognizant that $2,500 in rental assistance in today's age is much, goes much, does not go as far as it had in the past. So our club is going to be discussing with our board, possibly increasing some of these limits so that these people can actually make an impact on something more than just a thirty-day situation. So it's one of the things that's important to us is, you know, to be effective and make a difference. And we're starting to see that we might be stretching the limit of that with some of the financial restrictions we have in place. So our goal moving forward is to increase the number of families that we can help through the outreach grant program. Even though we were able to award five grants these first six months, technically the first three months of the program, the schools have been closed, is a number of the inquiries were for Calabasas students whose families actually don't live in Calabasas. And I understand, thank you so much to the council, that as long as students attend the Calabasas schools, we may consider their families in the future, even if they are not Calabasas residents and are directly adjacent. So we're looking to expand in that. Next slide, please. So community grants is another thing that we administer, and we are very, very, very happy to be involved with and are going and have awarded a grant for the Boys and Girls Club of Conejo to specifically begin and expand operations at four key Calabasas schools, which is Bay Laurel, Chaparral, AC Stell, and AE Wright. And we're looking forward to this for a number of reasons, not just that our community grant will help them direct the gift services to the students, but a lot of these students that will make use of these services are also going to be a situation where a lot of those families will be in need of our other grant programs. So it gives us another ear to the ground for aid that might be necessary for these families. Next. So as I mentioned, we've been doing this for fifteen years. We're making a real difference. We truly, truly appreciate the ongoing support of the City of Calabasas. And we are looking to responsibly allocate our budget for all the needs that we do, so we continue to make an impact in the future and meet the expectations of the council on the effectiveness of our program. So I'd like to conclude and ask for any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Let me look around. I see Councilmember Weintraub's hand. Is that?
Thank you so much for that great presentation and all the wonderful work you do. Just taken aback by one thing you said, that there was a change in policy to allow these funds to be used for outside of Calabasas residents. I wasn't aware that this change had been made.
That was information I was given from our members with conversation through city. And so if I am incorrect with that, then please correct me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll chime in there. That isn't correct. There are ongoing discussions right now because there have been requests from Agora residents for the program and up until now, there has not been grants provided and considered.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that we're sticking to the guidelines as currently established, which is for Calabasas families.
Absolutely. So I will apologize, council. That has not happened yet, but I'd been worried that I had gotten that if there was attendance at that schools. But so I apologize if I was giving incorrect information and misspoke, but be assured, none of that has happened as of yet.
Just because there's a lot of people that use our schools that don't live in the community, and I know the sole purpose of this was to focus on members in our community, and you guys are doing such a great job with that. I know there's many people in our community that are worthy of these funds. So thank you so much.
Yes, no problem whatsoever. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Shapiro, question, comment? I think you're muted.
You're muted.
How's that?
There he is.
Much better.
You're on.
Thank you. Alicia covered the portion of the question I had. So the only thing I have is a comment to Manny and the Calabasas Rotary Club for their fantastic work. They do a very wonderful, meaningful, important job that takes, it takes a lot of any, any takes a lot of our time away from having to do it and dealing with any political aspects. It's just doing the right thing for the right purpose, and we are so appreciative of what the Rotary does. And you don't even take credit for the things you give back in addition to doing this, doing this wonderful service and running the Neighbors in Need program. Back when we had the Woolsey Fire, the Rotary from the district level brought funds for those homeowners who lost their homes in our city and donated those back to our community members. So all I can say is thank you for the great work that you do and Rotary does.
Appreciate that very much. And again, honored to speak to you all and look forward to keeping everything running smoothly and appropriately in the future.
And I'll just conclude with saying that the Rotary Club is a wonderful service organization. They work both locally and internationally. And of course, they're most famous for their eradication of polio, which is a great concern right now. So if anybody does have spare time, please join them for a Tuesday lunch and get involved. So thank you, Manny.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Good evening.
All right, we're going to move on now to a presentation by the fire department. And do we have Chief Smith here? And is Megan present as well?
I know Chief Smith is here. We'll bring him in.
Fabulous. Good evening, City of Calabasas, and I want to thank the leadership of Calabasas for all your support to the Los Angeles County Fire Department. Your fire family is doing good. We are staying busy. We're healthy. And just some highlights of what's going on with us is we're starting an additional contract there, which is our Super Scoopers will be returning September 1st, so that'll augment our ten aircraft that we have. We also have on contract our very large heavy air helicopter, which is the 3,000 gallon Poulsen aircraft. So we have a robust air fleet that's going to come on any wildland emergencies. We have done some robust training as we do every year in preparation for wildland fire season, especially when those Santa wind-driven fires occur. And we're going to have a major drill tomorrow or workshop, if you will, that is hosted by Lost Hills Sheriff's, and that's Captain C2. So we host one via fire every year, and then they complement that with a law-centric one. So we host one that law's invited to, and then law's going to host one that we're invited to. So it's actually really good. It's nothing new. We continue to look at best practice and how we can be better in the life safety and evacuation component for wildland fires as we transition into the fall. And with that, the routine call volume in the City of Calabasas, I didn't see anything that really stuck out. I know that we've had quite a few snake calls, and they're going to continue to be out there in the Santa Monica Mountains. And that's all I have. Megan has another engagement that she's doing with the NOAA Weather Radio, so she's a consumer of that. We were just at Calabasas, had great attendance. It's been a great rollout program. We've done over a thousand with the the hands-on, I guess you could say, clinics that we've had on issuing those radios, and it's been really successful. We had a webinar last night on how to use the radios with great attendance and question and answer. So we're excited about the public safety component in our partnership with OEM and National Weather Service for that messaging on weather-related events. Any questions for me?
Sure. Let me start off. First of all, thank you both always for your service to our community, and if people have not received one of these weather alert radios, where can they go? Or what can they do? And then also, I watched the webinar last night. It was so helpful. I wanted to follow up on those that have hearing impaired. I understand there are some additional devices. If you could please also mention to the public how they can get those. Thank you.
So what we can.
I can, I can touch on that, Chief Smith.
Oh, she's back.
I'm here. So I believe your first question was if, if there will be other opportunities to get a radio. There will be. I'm going to be at Westlake Village City Hall on the 31st from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And I'm also going to be at the Malibu Senior Center on, I believe, September 13th from 9:00 a.m. to noon, but I am in the process of planning more distribution events in each city and incorporated areas. So I spoke with your public safety staff today, and we are setting, in the process of setting something up and confirming something. So once that is confirmed, then we'll send out the information about the latest distribution events. And then, like Chief Smith said, we had the webinar last night, and we we have currently up till now given up, given out approximately 1,400 radios. And we started with 4,000, so there are a decent amount left to hand out. And if there are people with hearing issues, if people are hard of hearing or they need help waking up, I do have those attachments, so people can reach out to me directly, and I can arrange for them to get one of those attachments for the radio.
Okay. And maybe, Kendon, can we ask the, our public safety staff to make sure that the senior center attendees know about this particular additional feature, which is great. And for those that may not be as familiar, this is a weather alert system that will notify you of red flag warnings, high wind events, flooding, heavy rains, things of that sort, and and other information. It's just remarkable that we're doing it to notify residents of emergency situations. Thank you. Are there any other questions? I see, yes, Kendon.
Madam Mayor, I did want to point out, Megan has provided the link to the same NOAA radio that is available on Amazon. So there's a number of, you know, they're, they're doing their best to get these out quickly, but again, 5,000 is a limited number. And for approximately, I think it was $30, Megan, if that's correct, the same model is on Amazon, and so we will make sure we disseminate that link as well.
Yes, that is true. And, and even we are working on getting another round of grant funding for these radios, but even with additional funding, there's not going to be enough for every single household in the Santa Monica Mountains region. So we are encouraging people to, if they can afford it, buy one for $30. They have them on Amazon, I think, at Home Depot, Staples, a few other places. And that exact model is available.
Great, wonderful. Any other comments? All right. Thank you both again, always, for coming and giving us updates and helping us. Appreciate it.
For the support, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, coming up next, we have from the Lost, Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, Deputy De Mateo, welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Yeah, I'm Deputy De Mateo from the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. I'm going to be presenting the crime reports for the months of May and June. So let's get into May. We did have a total of thirty Part One crimes. I'll go over the significant crimes through this list. We did have one-armed robbery. This was an incident that took place on Lost Virgin, on North Lost Virginous Road at a business where a suspect had a knife and was ultimately arrested. And I'm happy to say that there were no injuries during that incident. We did have ten grand thefts in that month. They were all retail-based. We did have one arson. This occurred at a residence during a family argument where the suspect lit some items on fire in the house. That's it for June and, or excuse me, for May and now for June. We did have thirty-nine Part One crimes. It's an increase of seventeen percent, which is not good. I will go over some significant issues during that month. We did have one allegation of rape. This was an incident that took place between a couple going through a divorce. That investigation is being investigated by the Sheriff's Detective Bureau, and no further information is available at that time. We did have two assaults. One occurred during a landlord-tenant dispute, and another one involved juveniles, where somebody was injured with an airsoft gun. We did have another ten grand thefts. These were a mixture of retail thefts, catalytic converter thefts, and package thefts. That's it for June. I know we got a busy, busy calendar. So were there any questions for either May or June?
All right, let me check and see. Are there any questions for Deputy De Mateo from the council? I see one hand up. And James, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Deputy De Mateo.
Evening.
You're here. Do we, do you have any general comments about the increases in the crime rate, anything that? Yeah, I mean, are we still dealing with the moratorium on hiring new deputies and increasing contract services? Or is there an end to that in sight?
Yeah, that's something that I can ask our operations staff, and I can address you after this meeting.
Okay. It's just of concern to me. I mean, as a general comment, I'll tell you that each month goes, I mean, last year's rate was high.
Right.
Previous rate. Now we're continuing to see this, this increase here. And as far as I know, there's been no, no change unless there's been some kind of internal announcement as far as our ability to get extra services. So if there's a change, would you let us know, please?
Yes, sir, I will do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Think any other questions, comments? I just wanted to add, Deputy De Mateo, how much we appreciate you, in particular, and your connection to our community and and our residents and getting to know the younger people and who might need some extra assistance or more understanding, and you really have a great balance, and we really appreciate it. So thank you and stay safe out there.
Thank you too. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right, we're going to move on now to council announcements. Let me start with Mayor Pro Tem David Shapiro. Do you have any announcements?
I'll just make one quick one, one and a half. First, school's back in session as of today in Calabasas, all the public schools. Everyone be extra careful, be extra safe. We are going to do and continue to do everything we can to make traffic be less of an issue. We are working on that. We realize, but take your time, drive slower. Be aware, there are a lot more children and youth walking and driving in the city. And then this Sunday is our final concert in the park, the final concert of the year at the lake at the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center in the lake is a Jan and D. the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center in the lake is a Jan and Dean Beach Boy Tribute Band. It's a surf it's from six o'clock Sunday until eight. And it's going to be fun. Come out. The weather should be great. Have a wonderful time and be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Basatchian?
Uh, no, I do not. Thank you.
Councilmember Crowe?
Uh, sure. I just want to let everybody know that the Agori Hills Calabasas Community Center Roof Repairs have uh the project has gone to bid and the bids have been extended. The revised due date is now September one. But that project is moving forward. We're very excited about that. And if you want more details, the Agori Hills Calabasas Community Center Joint Powers Authority Board Meeting is tomorrow night uh at six thirty P M. And you can find details at A H C C C dot org.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Councilmember Wangtrum?
Thank you. Just welcome back to school to everyone. And just I'm sure people saw today there was an increased motor presence from the sheriff's station along Mulholland Highway to assist with traffic. But if everyone can just do their part, um, you know, as you drive along that corridor, especially you see people blocking residents' driveways and things like that. So we really want to keep things safe and run smoothly. So if you can just leave a little bit early for drop off and pickup and just really respect the neighbors who live around the schools, that would be great. But you will see increased um presence from the sheriff to assist in keeping things moving and safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just add to be more specific, I would encourage parents to leave a half an hour earlier than they normally would so that they're not creating stressful environments in the car when their kid first gets to school. Um it would really help alleviate the traffic drop off too, if you could arrive a half an hour earlier. I have two announcements um from the mayor's youth council and they are having a clothing drive on September seventeenth from two to four in front of the library. So please start cleaning out your closets, your shoes, warm jackets. Um, you can even buy clean new socks and underwear for people and bring them to the to the library. Um, they will be in um in turn provided to the hope of the valley, um which is a um they provide a number of services for the mentally ill, including housing. And if you haven't seen or looked into the Hope of the Valley before, I encourage you to do so. It's a great place to volunteer. Um, the second event they're doing is a Young Voter Night on September twentieth in the Senior Center. And this is an opportunity where Councilmember Wangtrum and I will be going over all of the different items on the ballot from the different races um to the initiatives and and things like that. So um that's the mayor's youth council. They're staying very busy. All right, we're now going to be moving on to oral communication. Now, this part of the meeting, oral communication, is if you have something to say about something that's not on the agenda. And I know we have a lot of people here on the park item, but this is not the time um for you to talk. This is the time to speak on items not on the agenda. So I see a number of hands up already and they've been up a while. But right now, um, we just need for a public comment. Mari, I don't know if there's, so if you could put your hands down just for a second, if you're here to talk about the parks and raise them if you're here for public comment and we'll see if we can't sort that out a bit.
I believe there's one, Madam Mayor. No, disregard.
Okay.
Public comment.
All right, you can put your hands back up for the for the uh the dog item. In fact, um, put the dog item, the park item, I thought wild, wild, wild walnut park on my mind. Um, all right, we're going to move on to the presentation uh for item seven. Um, this is uh for city council direction and funding approval. For it was for, but as I mentioned, Freedom Park um has been postponed. Um, and we're going to have a PowerPoint PowerPoint presentation about Danza Sport Court, Gates Canyon Park and Wild Walnut Park. And I'm going to hand it over to our city manager, Kendon Meek, to tee it up.
Thank you, Mayor, so much. Uh, good evening, council members. It it's good to be with you and especially to have this opportunity to talk about parks. Um, as you're aware, parks are investments in communities and uh what you're going to be doing tonight is uh some long term investments uh that will have wonderful ramifications for years to come. And so we thank you for taking the time to consider this and and wrestle with this. Um, what I wanted to lead into is first of all, a a big thank you to um our community services staff and the time that they've put into uh not only preparing the presentation and getting ready for this, but uh fielding questions, uh doing outreach, um uh meeting with people uh and just doing their day to day jobs that makes it possible for us to enjoy those parks. So thank you to that that group as well. Uh, as we start this, um uh discussion council, one of the things I I want uh the council and the community to be aware of is uh some of the funding sources that we'll be talking about. Uh, tonight we'll be uh referencing the ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, these were uh funds allocated through the federal government to cities and counties. The city of Calabasas received approximately five point seven million dollars in ARPA funds. Uh, initially, these these funds were very restricted. There were guidelines and parameters on how those funds could be spent. In fact, uh, the council was proactive in and providing um uh uh relief to some of our grocery workers. Uh, we use some of our funds for to help those who are unhoused and have some contracts with services. And um we looked at other ways that we could use these funds as well. After that uh initial discussion and some of those commitments early on, the federal government came back and uh created what they called a standard deduction. Uh, in in essence, what this did did is it relieved cities and counties of the burdens uh or those parameters that were initially put in place. And with this standard deduction, every city, every county could use up to ten million dollars uh uh in essence without those restrictions. So um in in reality, it almost became as if these are general fund monies. Um, and again, the the city of Calabasas did not receive ten million, but because we're under that threshold, five point seven, everything became unrestricted. Uh, understanding those changes, we came to the council uh through our budgetary process in April, May and June. And especially with the creation of our capital improvement plan, our five year capital improvement plan. And we allocated these funds out to a number of different projects, uh uh bulk of which went to parks. Um, but we allocated this five point, you know, what was spent, what was committed, and then looking forward again to some other projects. Um, we've allocated almost all of these funds out with the exception of about three hundred and eighty thousand. So there is a a a few dollars left from those. But again, these have all been committed uh again, with the majority going to parks um over the next few years. What we're looking tonight for, what we're looking for from the council tonight is a policy direction. Um, as the policymakers, we're looking to you to help us um and guide us in some decisions on infrastructure, which in turn has um uh will be played out through programming. But we're also looking at uh uh funding. Again, uh, some of the projects were initially uh presented as being phased. Um, we have some ideas of moving up those fundings to expedite projects. And um depending on the decisions that are made, uh, there may be uh an additional request for funding, meaning we might uh come back to council and reallocate some of that remaining three hundred and eighty thousand from ARPA funds for some of these projects, depending on how uh the council decides to give that direction. Um, again, thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate the community and stakeholders being here to participate. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Erica.
And and before you do that, if I could just say, uh, let the and let the public know that what's going to happen is Erica is going to present an overview by parks. So the first park is going to be Deanza Park. Um, she'll give her overview, we'll open it up to public comment and then go to council questions and comments and then deliberation. The next park will be uh Gates Canyon and the same process. And then the final part will be Wild Walnut. So um those of you interested in Deanza, this would be your opportunity um to uh raise your hand. And then I also just want to say, I think this is a really exciting night. I mean, we have three fabulous opportunities to really um expand and improve um and provide opportunities for the public and children to continue recovery from this pandemic and get outdoors and play. So I'm really excited. And with that, I hand it off to you, Erica.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here. Um, can everyone?
Yes.
See that? Okay. Alrighty, uh, so like Kendon mentioned, thank you, Kendon, um for the introduction and Madam Mayor. Um so we are going to start with our projects overview. So here are the projects we're going to discuss tonight. Deanza Park, which is the rehabilitation and determination of sports use at the Juan Bautista Deanza Sport Court. Freedom Park will come later. Uh, we will bring that to council at a later date after further research and study. Gates Canyon Park, we will be discussing the replacement of playground equipment and pour and play uh rubber surfacing. Wild Walnut Park, the construction of a permanent dog park playground equipment and parking lot. So as Kendon mentioned, what we're asking council to do tonight um is provide direction on the projects um and improve funding sources that haven't already been approved, the C I P pro process or the budget. Um, and after that is done, uh, we will take items back to the Parks Recreation and Education Commission as necessary and get additional public engagement as well. So the first part we're going to talk about is Deanza Park Sport Court. Again, this is the sport court rehabilitation and determination of sport court use. And I'm just going to give a brief background and timeline of what has happened up to uh present day. So in October of twenty twenty one, um, we determined to renov- renovate the sport court due to safety concerns. Uh, we had some deterioration in the sport court surface and the dashboard boards um and some of the basketball units. Um, at that same time, we had kind of an an outpouring of pickleball players requesting for additional courts for play. And currently, we have a couple of courts at the Tennis and Swim Center. Um and the community center, which is which is closed at this time. Um, so we were really looking for ways that we can give additional pickleball players uh some court play as well as what what could we do to program the sport court. Um, if we were going to revitalize the roller hockey um and add pickleball, we were open to all of that. So staff did some research. Um, and then we presented that to the Parks Recreation and Education Commission for the recommendation um in December of twenty twenty one. Uh, they requested additional cost information. So we went back in February with some details on costs. Again, these, the details on costs were line items, but they were also um ballpark figures. We hadn't done a deep dive yet until we figured out what which way the pre would like to go and and recommend to city council. So at the end of that meeting, they recommended future use of basketball and pickleball. Um, from there, a survey was distributed for public input on the future use of the sport court. And then at the same time, staff researched costs for multiple sport court options. Here's some photos of the current condition of the sport court. Um, as you can see, these dashboard boards here um are a bit deteriorated. This is the wood. This is original to the sport court when it was built. Um, this paneling here, I believe, is about ten years later was installed. You can see the warping here. So this is part of the reason for the rehabilitation um in looking at what we can do to enhance the safety at the court. Again, this is the the wood behind the dashboard boards. And here's the actual surface itself. You could see some of the parking and chipping um on the court surface, requiring us to definitely resurface this court. So the survey results, um, the survey was was put out in April and opened for about three weeks. Um, the way it's displayed in the PowerPoint is exactly how it was distributed to the public. So we received nineteen hundred and nine responses, um, I think, which is the highest response rate for any uh city um survey at this point. Um, the survey could be taken more than once after twenty four hours. Um, so one of the first questions was how often you or members of the household are likely to play roller hockey at Deanza? And forty five percent indicated they would never use the court for roller hockey. And almost fifty five percent said they would use it throughout the year. Um, and here's the breakdown here. Those who said they would never use pickleball is about forty nine percent and those who said they would, about fifty one percent. Um, so we're looking at about fifty fifty um for uses of the sport court. Um, we have probably the same, around the same fifty fifty for use of rollerblading. Rollerblading is really popular and roller skating at this time for um uh trending high with California Park and Recreation Society and also the National Recreation Parks Association, um just as pickleball is. Um, so we had fifty two percent say they would use the court and about forty eight said they would not for rollerblading. We also asked the question of zip codes of the responders to the survey. Um, about fifty seven percent said they were Calabasas residents and thirty seven lived outside and six percent chose not to answer that survey question. So going over the sport options, our our first option is basketball and pickleball, second basketball and roller hockey, and third, all three sports. Um, I just want to make note that basketball uh is one of our department's highest revenue generating program for the department, almost about four hundred thousand dollars a year and serving um about seven hundred uh youth for each season. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there. We we really would like the basketball courts to remain. We actually need those courts to remain to in order to continue with our robust basketball program. So the first option, basketball and pickleball. So these are um schematics on what the striping would look like. Again, there's variations with color. This is just basically to show the public and council um how that would look. So we researched some pros and cons for each of these scenarios. And as I mentioned, pickleball is a name top trend for from the National Recreation and Park Association. Um, this would also meet additional pickleball or needs by the uh park patrons for additional pickleball courts. Um, there's a revenue opportunity uh with classes, tournaments and round robins. Um lower maintenance costs because of the reduction in the dashboard boards, um not having to maintain those. And the traction on the court surface is ideal for both sports, which both would need a rougher surface, more traction. Um, they call that aggregate. Um, they would need that for this would meet those needs. Um, some of the cons, the loss of the only lighted hockey court in uh the valley, um and then temporary nets for pickleball aren't as desirable um as permanent nets. Um, temporary nets would be needed to remove in and out when using basketball. The next option is basketball and roller hockey. Some of the pros, we have, it's the only lighted hockey court in in the West Valley. Um, revenue opportunity for roller hockey classes, tournaments, round robins. Uh, same kind of thing. Roller skating is trending high, as I mentioned earlier. Um uh, so the surface, uh, we'd have to look at that surface again. Um, with roller hockey, they would require smoother surface where basketball would require more traction. Um, so some of the cons, research shows downward trend in roller hockey. Um, resurfacing for roller hockey is more frequent uh just because of the constant skating and the puck, et cetera. Um, and then the court surface, like I mentioned, requires a smooth surface uh for roller hockey and one with more traction for basketball, which is something to consider. And then it's striking there. And option three um would be all three sports. So here in the schematic, it's a little confusing. Um but again, these colors can be adjusted and and primary uh colors could be worked out with that. That's just so you have an idea of what that would look like. So some of the pros is the option to serve more public members, obviously, uh accommodating all three sports. Um, higher potential for revenue, doing tournaments and leagues for both um pickleball and roller hockey. Um, some of the cons is the confusing court striping as as you can see there. Um, competing court times, we would just have to, uh, staff would really have to figure out um how to program uh those three sports uh in order to give everyone equitable use of of the court. Um the conflicting court surfacing, again, like I had mentioned, the roller hockey is going to need a smoother surface where basketball and pickleball would need more traction. Um. Higher resurfacing costs, so we'd have to resurface it, uh, on a more frequent basis. Um, staff cost to oversee court use and equipment needs. Um, so because of the additional equipment with roller hockey and, um, pickleball, we would need a storage unit to, um, house those equipment items. Um, and then we'd probably need staff to be out there to move items in and out and oversee the use, uh, for each, uh, of the programs. And then again, costs for onsite storage needed for the equipment for all three sports. If that were the case, um, staff recommends we put the storage unit as indicated here, which a close up is over here. Um. So costs, the cost for basketball and pickleball. Um, we'd have to demo and replace, uh, six of the adjustable basketball systems. They're antiquated. Uh, they don't go up and down as needed. Um, I, I believe a couple do, but to accommodate our tots, we would need to replace those basketball systems. Um, the demo of the existing dashboard, which would just be removing those court and resurfacing and restriking. Um, fence upgrades and repairs, uh, it's in, it's in need of, uh, fencing upgrades for sure. Um, additional amenities, the paddle holders and then rolling temporary nets, which gives us about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. To upgrade the court for basketball and pickleball. For basketball and roller hockey, um, to demo and replace the existing dashboard system. Like I mentioned, the wood that's there now is, uh, is original to the court. Um, and it's warping and needs to be updated. Uh, to update that to a current dashboard system would be a aluminum and fiberglass system. Um, that would last, uh, many years. Um, replace the six adjustable basketball systems, as I mentioned, the resurfacing and restriking remains the same, fence repairs. Um, the same, um, we'd have to replace the electronic scoreboard and replace commercial grade hockey nets. Uh, for a total of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, um, dollars about. And then finally, for all three sports. Um, again, the demoing of the dashboard system, hundred and sixty thousand, the demo replace of six adjustable basketball systems, again, twenty-four. The restriking stays the same at thirty, uh, fence and upgrade repairs goes up a bit. Um, we'd have to change some of the way the fencing is laid out to accommodate both pickleball, um, and roller hockey to keep, uh, uh, any, any pucks or anything like that from, and, and balls going into the player box. Um, additional amenities, the storage rental for equipment is about eighteen hundred per year. Again, the scoreboard at seventy-five hundred, the hockey nets, paddle holders and roller, rolling temporary nets brings us to about two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars for all three sports. So what we have for funding sources currently. Um, is the LA County Regional Park and Open Space District Prop A Grant Application for Maintenance and Servicing. Um, we have, uh, the city of Calabasas has money allocated to, uh, in that fund. Uh, so I would request a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from that funding source. Uh, the city council approved a CIP project, uh, for forty-five thousand dollars for the sport court. And finally, um, the Los Angeles Kings, uh, we've had conversations with them. They are interested in sponsoring the sport court. Uh, so why this is on here is one for the, for the funding, um, and two to discuss with city council how they feel about having corporate sponsorship and logos. Um, and, and naming rights and things of that nature, uh, on our city facilities. So they are open to sponsoring, um, the court. I just wanted to get, uh, council's feedback on how they felt about that. Um, we can move forward from there. So council action, what we're asking. Is you to provide direction to staff on the future use of the sport court. The sport types, approve project and funding sources, provide direction on the corporate sponsorship. And then authorize the city manager to execute agreements and amendments within his, uh, authority. So with that, um, that completes the presentation for Deansa, if there's any questions.
Um, we're going to go to public, uh, comment right now. Madam Clerk, can you begin?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Matt Zone, followed by Francisco Rivera. You, please state your name and the city you live in. You have three minutes or one to two minutes to address the council. Three minutes if you represent an organization.
Hello there. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Matt Zone, and I've been a resident of Calabasas since I was a baby in nineteen ninety-nine. I took learn to skate lessons with Ned Collins amongst little kids and toddlers as a freshman in high school. And hockey quickly became my greatest passion. Playing in the Tri-Valley Roller Hockey League, I formed lifelong bonds with peers of various ages, genders and backgrounds. And developed many skills. Uh, developed my skills enough to earn a spot on the San Francisco State University Ice Hockey Team. When my childhood home burned down in the Woolsey Fire of twenty eighteen, I continued to utilize the rink as a safe space to clear my thoughts and play the game that I love. I was devastated to hear the rink was in jeopardy and shocked the city never engaged with the hockey community who'd been using the rink for the past twenty-five years. For feedback before making such a decision. I still participate in vibrant pickup games with twenty to thirty players at a time. There would be even more hockey being played. However, the park began locking the nets, forcing players like myself to transport nets. In personal vehicles to play Monday through Friday nights. Again, we want a shared facility and the revenue from a city-run hockey league would pay for the improvement for all three sports and contribute to a general fund. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mari. Francisco Rivera.
Good evening, distinguished council members and everyone attending this meeting. I am Francisco X Rivera. I'm the Spanish TV and radio voice of the Los Angeles Kings and proud resident of Calabasas for the last eleven years. Uh, besides my broadcast role, I'm also a consultant and team ambassador. I lead the outreach strategy within our Latino community in Southern California and Mexico. Been working really, really hard to grow the game within our youth around the Los Angeles area and realized how important i- is having a roller rink to help the development of hockey players, especially when you consider. How costly ice hockey is and the few ice rings that we have around the area. Our LA Kings Bowl hockey programs, um, have been really, really important. Uh, sometimes you don't even own a pair of skates, and I think they've done a tremendous job to make the game more accessible to our community. I was, uh, recently having a conversation with one of our Kings players, Trevor Moore, and his mother about his playing days at the Anza Park a few years ago. And realized how important our park was for a young kid from South, from Thousand Oaks that eventually made his way into the NHL and played his first playoff series just a few months ago. I'm aware of the fact that only a few kids will make it to the major leagues, but at the same time, the opportunities that young players can get by playing the game in our park can be priceless, including getting scholarships and attending college. So on a personal note now, I live a few blocks away from the park and be very fortunate to become a part of our hockey community in Calabasas. And by the way, our surface is great. I had never skated in my life. And so far in two years, it's been great for me. Our surface has, has worked amazing. And you know, I've done my due diligence following up with the Kings about potential collaborations with our park, trying to boost the chances to, you know, become a good financial resource for our city. As well as bringing more events and income to our Calabasas community. I know that Echo's a hope, the charity foundation of our team president and hockey Hall of Famer Luke Robitaille, has respectfully submitted a letter to support our costs. As well as former LAC Control, uh, LAC the Controller and a former Kings, uh, advisor board member, Wendy Grul, has also reached out to council members. So thank you for your time and I want to keep hockey an integral part of our multipurpose facility that attracts hundreds of players in Calabasas and neighboring areas.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next is Jeff Tufaro.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hi, my name is Jeffrey Tufaro. I'm a local resident and I've played at the Deansa Park since twenty fifteen and I continue to play there. My point tonight is just to simply comment that there are multiple alternative locations that can easily incorporate pickleball into already established locations, and so it won't interfere with the hockey rink. Great Barbara Park is roughly one mile from Deansa, um, and it can, and it has tennis and basketball cart courts. Uh, Gates Canyon Park, um, has basketball and tennis courts. It's only two point nine miles away. Creekside Park does have basketball, baseball and soccer fields. Unfortunately, it is eight miles away. However, uh, the best recommendation I believe is the Calabasas Agora Rec Center, which is only one point one miles away. And we do know it does have the indoor pickleball courts. Um, and I, I believe that if there is any kind of, uh, concern as far as noise and decibel levels, having an indoor court for the local residents, I believe that would probably be much more beneficial to people of the Avalon community. Uh, the rec center does also have, um, racquetball courts, which I believe, um, I don't know if that's trending downward as well, but I believe pickleball is more popular than racquetball. So racquetball courts could also be, um, repurposed for pickleball, uh, providing more indoor courts. And of course, indoor courts would be, uh, climate controlled, uh, so during the hottest parts of the California summer, anyone, uh, who'd want to play would be able to do so. Um, I, I do find it disconcerting that a park would truly really be considering destroying something. It, it just doesn't sit right with me. A community, specifically parks and recreation, should enrich people's lives and provide happiness and enjoyment. But I feel this divide between pickleball and roller hockey is that nothing but provides strife when there's exceedingly simple solutions available. Uh, especially with the way the world is now. I think we could all agree, we all need reasons to appreciate our health and well-being and a we- a better way to put them to play hockey. Um, the Burbank Roller Hockey Rink is a great, um, example, uh, of a rink that was once thought to be removed, but was reinvigorated and is now thriving, um, with the help of the LA Kings. Uh, I really hope that we can all, uh, come to, uh, a really positive solution here that's beneficial for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Gavin L. And Gavin, please state the name, your name and the city you live in.
Hi, my name is Gavin Linderman. I live in Nagora Hills. I'm requesting, uh, three minutes as I'm representing the Calabasas Hockey Club.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank the city council members. Uh, you guys are very ambitious, taking on three parks in one night. So we appreciate your, your work with the community. I do want to mention that the park submission tonight was untimely. Uh, our group was waiting, hoping to be able to review the submission on Friday, August nineteenth. However, wasn't made available, uh, to my knowledge to the public until today. Uh, but as many people have said, this is a historical rink. This is actually home to the first ever inline roller league in the world. There are no other roller leagues, uh, or roller rinks within a twenty mile radius. So Tri-Valley Roller Hockey League has become a staple within Calabasas. I mean, if you look at prior registration, there were hundreds of people playing every week before the pandemic. Uh, thousands of Calabasas residents have come through the program. It's extremely significant and you can see this objectively through the community survey. I do want to point out on the community survey, if you were to look at the high use category of twenty-five times or more per year, hockey clearly was the more favorable sport. There are six hundred and sixty-three respondents for hockey versus four hundred and fifty-three for pickleball. Uh, my position in the Calabasas Hockey Club's position is not to prevent pickleball players from using it, but just to show that there is strong enthusiasm within the hockey community. The pickup games have continued on Sundays, uh, you know, hosting large numbers of players, which is surprising to us that. There wasn't much stakeholder engagement prior to the Parks Recreation Education Commission meeting in February. Uh, stakeholder engagement from the hockey side. We've been using this rink for over twenty years. Uh, and, and we do have, have valuable information that we could offer. Um, we have looked into all of the concerns regarding lining, surface type boards and programming. Uh, we've had a source contact Jim Taylor from Taylor Tennis, who has done the work at the rink in prior years. Uh, and it's our, uh, we're aware that Taylor Tennis says they do have a surface that would work perfectly for all three sports. So, uh, please don't let the surface type be an obstacle to moving forward with a shared solution. Uh, as it goes for revenue, roller hockey has an opportunity through a city-run league to be extremely profitable. Um, if you look at prior registration, the hockey league likely generated between a hundred and eighty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. This would be the, my knowledge, the second highest generating sport on the surface. I've contacted the Rancho Simi Park District for information on the revenue generated from their pickleball facility, which they have ten pickleball courts. And it's free to play there. They've attempted running a league, which has since closed. So if we are thinking about from a revenue generating standpoint, I think we have a lot of opportunity for hockey to fund the development for all of the sports. For the revenue from hockey to fund improvements for pickleball, for basketball and for roller hockey. I would like to comment just personally connected to the, to Special Olympics and the disabled population that I would like to see the community consider involving Special Olympics with floor hockey. Uh, at the Deansa Park, uh, the Deansa surface. It's a, it's a needed, it's a needed resource within the community. So while there are many possible locations for pickleball, there's only one location for roller hockey. So we appreciate the council and we want to thank you guys for giving this matter the attention that it deserves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Katsner. Please state the li- the city you live in.
Hello, hi, uh, this is David Katsner and I am in Calabasas and I'm right down the road from Deansa Park, where, uh, I've spent a good amount of time. Both playing hockey and, uh, attempting to bring pickleball. I, I do think, and I'm glad to be the first pickleball, uh, advocate here. I would like to address a couple of the issues that I think are a little flawed here. Uh, looking at the numbers of the survey and the way the survey was conducted, the opportunity to revote every twenty-four hours. If I did my math right, there's some, they're saying there's seventeen thousand hockey visits during the course of a year. I'm going to take issue with that. I do love hockey very much. Um, but, uh, I've been there, I've been watching. That's, that's just not the case. With regards to a couple of other points that have been brought up. Uh, hockey, uh, pickleball indoors at the, at the gym is how I was introduced to the sport, how I fell in love with the sport. However, it is not really a pickleball facility. It is unsafe, quite frankly, because there's not enough room to run either back or off to the sides. They are cramped together. The back wall is two feet behind and so people, I have, I have actually been injured there myself. It is not a, a pickleball facility. Also, I would make the point, uh, I think someone point, brought up that they have racquetball there. They do not have racquetball at, uh, Community Center. Um, with regards to, uh, the popularity and everything else with, uh, about pickleball. Uh, it is the fastest growing sport in America. It is on CBS Sports now. It is, uh, there's no thirty-five percent growth during the pandemic. Um, it's, it's a social experience. It's a, uh, and I have met all, I've met an amazing amount of wonderful Calabasas friends from playing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Robbie Amadio. Robbie, please tell us the city you live in.
My name's Robbie Amadio. I live in Calabasas, um, near Deansa Park. Um, thank you, um, Madam Mayor and members of the council for giving us time to speak tonight. Um, intergenerational play, the ability to engage in a sport without regard for gender, age or ability. This is what pickleball provides and more. Other cities, including Santa Monica, El Segundo and Westchester, have recently and successfully redesigned their facilities for shared use. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport in our country and Calabasas needs to be part of this forward trend. Calabasas needs to provide a place in our parks where our citizens of all ages, of all genders and of all ability can participate. The opportunities that you can provide to our kids to be part of a sport in which they don't have to have speed and they don't have to have strength. And then get out there and they can participate and have fun and build confidence. Think about the after-school and summer programs that you could provide to our kids. Pickleball is the future. I encourage the council to make a decision based on what enables our parks to serve the greater good. I would also like to just make a comment about corporate sponsorship. Um, I, I would certainly want to know more. I would certainly have concerns about having corporate, corporate sponsorships. At our local parks and banners of corporate sponsorships at our local parks. I'm not aware that there are currently any, um, at any of our parks or any of our, um, other public facilities. So that is an issue in and of itself. I see that as separate from this discussion. So again, I want to thank the council. I know that these are difficult, um, decisions, um, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Todd Cheyette. Please tell us the city you live in, Todd.
Yes, uh, my name is Todd Cheyette and I live in Calabasas. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Um, I've been a Calabasas resident for seventeen years and I have played hockey at, and Deansa Park for over ten years. I'm deeply concerned about the potential loss of the rink at Deansa. Um, and I'm also disappointed to hear that potentially the Parks Department has made it, uh, more difficult to use, uh, the rink. Um, but despite some of the obstacles that have been put in our way, uh, in playing hockey over there, uh, we continue to play, uh, pickup games, as one of the other speakers mentioned. And in fact, just the other day, uh, on Sunday, we had a game over there, uh, at the rink. And when we got there, there were a group of, um, young, uh, roller skaters with the old, old fashioned four-wheel roller skates. And, uh, and they were using half the rink, uh, so we decided to use the other half of the rink as the hockey players and had one goalie and, and sort of played a pickup game that way. And, uh, it was just a very, um, I, I thought it was great. It really includes, uh, as one of the other speakers mentioned, hockey does include, and skating does include all ages and all genders. hockey does include, and skating does include, all ages and all genders and people of all abilities. So I want to point out one thing that the Parks Department might have missed in its analysis. During the April 11 hearing before the Parks Committee, I gave a public comment pointing out some serious concerns about noise from pickleball. There's been litigation and complaints in other jurisdictions, and I just want to make sure the committee and the council considers those concerns. So those are in the April 11 comments. The other things that the city's done, I know I want to be respectful of my time, so I think I'll just cut it off and say that, you know, we hope that we can preserve the rink at DeAnza and have sports there for everyone, and really appreciate the council's time.
Thank you.
Katie Morgan? Katie, please tell us the city you live in.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for letting us speak. I am from Calabasas, and I've been here since 1989, predating the city's incorporation. I learned to play pickleball also in the Calabasas Agoura Community Center, like David, and that was about four years ago. But I immediately moved my, what has become daily play, to the nearest public outdoor courts, which are in Oak Park and Deer Hill Park there. And the indoor court lines were complicated, confusing. There was too much noise. You couldn't hear your fellow players over the noise in there. And it really isn't practical. It was a great place to learn, appreciate the services that were provided there. But playing indoors is not preferable by any stretch of the imagination. Pickleball is an outdoor sport, and frankly, the stories about the noise are created because our news media, sorry, just gets a little carried away with bad news. The noise is not that high, certainly no higher than basketball, for crying out loud. Anyway, that aside, pickleball, we are flocking to courts everywhere, and it's outside of our city, which is just nuts because we have such a beautiful city. I've met hundreds of players in Oak Park and Newberry Park, many of whom are from Calabasas, everybody driving out there. And many of them have become very close friends and are here tonight to speak. Pickleball has offered us, all of us, social opportunities that didn't exist for us before. The ability to meet, play, and socialize with people of all genders and ages, like Robbie was saying. We enjoy cardio, agility, and strength-building exercise on the courts while joking, laughing, and sharing family stories. No other sport is as accessible to all ages, sizes, and shapes and fitness levels. Four in a court, two courts per tennis court, pickleball offers eight people playtime versus two to four.
We have Marston next. Marston, please state your full name and the city you live in.
You need to unmute yourself.
We'll go to the next speaker. We'll bring Marston later. Please state your name and the city you live in. You need to unmute yourself, please. Catherine Nolan, can you unmute? Okay, she's not unmuting, Madam Mayor, so we'll go to the next speaker.
Mari, can you make sure that it's not at our end, that they're not, that they're, because that's two in a row. Let's see if Miguel can unmute.
Miguel Asensio or Insi, so I'm sorry.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you tell us the city you live in, please?
Yes, ma'am. I live in Agoura Hills. I am the former United States Pickleball Ambassador for the City of Oak Park, California. I'm the current Pickleball Director at the Westlake Athletic Club. I also teach up at Sherwood Country Club. So I have been an active member and seen the pickleball community, certainly in Oak Park, grow to great, great heights. As many of you know, the sport is absolutely exploding. I think Katie was commenting about how many people you can accommodate on a tennis court with pickleball, and you can basically put eight people where normally, excuse me, yeah, eight people where normally on one court, because you have two pickleball courts, you can have eight people where normally four people in tennis can maximally play. So you're really able to double those numbers, and the numbers are absolutely exploding. I totally agree with Katie's comments about the competing lines on the indoor courts. You're competing with volleyball, badminton, basketball. It's very, very confusing. This is a sport, as someone else has already mentioned, that is embracing all genders, all ages, and it has become, since COVID, a great social and a community of people who, the usage on these courts, if you're looking at getting usage on your wonderful recreation areas, pickleball is the answer. It has so many people coming out, and if parks and recs want usage, I would highly recommend that you really consider the pickleball option. You guys are great. I just want to say, last thing, what a great comprehensive.
Rose Dunn? Rose, please tell us the city you live in.
Mari, can I see the timer?
Hi, my name is Rose Dunn, and I actually live in Montonito, which is a community in, near Calabasas, but not in Calabasas. But my husband and I have been recently retired playing pickleball and just really excited about the sport. I never really want to speak against any sport, but I will tell you that the one disadvantage that roller hockey has is it costs about $500 a kid to get outfitted for roller hockey. And as many of you know, because I know many of you from my school district position, I'm all about what's good for kids, and I do believe that pickleball has a lot that's really good for kids. My son was a camp counselor at DeAnza. It would have been very beneficial to have courts at that time, at that place, for those children to play at a very inexpensive cost. I also know that as a government agency, we're always looking for ways to increase our revenue, and that pickleball tournaments make anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 per, and they're fun, and it is a way to generate some revenue for the city. I also know that DeAnza was county in its kind of orientation. They gave money. They're giving money again. And pickleball is a great way to kind of join our L.A. County residents in having awesome experiences intergenerationally, where we can really just be a community. And it's been awesome and exciting to be able to be a part of that. I encourage your support of a pickleball court there. I also know.
Rose, your time is up. Sorry, Rose, your time is up.
No problem.
Next, we have Brendan Jasso. Jasso, I mean Brendan, please tell us your city. Please unmute yourself. Brendan? Madam Mayor, we'll go to the next speaker again. Marston again?
Good evening, everybody.
Please tell us your city.
Yes, my name is Marston, and I'm in Calabasas. And one of the things that I wanted to respectfully bring to the council's attention here is that there's a lot of misinformation flowing around here regarding these two sports. It's like this battle is going on, and one of the things is no one from the hockey community is out here petitioning to not include pickleball at this facility. In fact, we would like to have pickleball there and hockey there and basketball. This is a community location, community center, and all these sports are very clearly important to everybody here. The petition speaks for itself. You know, we need pickleball. We need hockey. And one of the other huge concerns is there's huge resistance from the operators of that park against hockey. This is a very biased presentation. Confusing court striping. I'm going to urge the council to look at this. This diagram is not accurate. This is not how the striping is going to look. It's not going to be this confusing. This is not to scale. These lines aren't that thick. They'd be three feet wide if you put this to scale out there. It doesn't look this messy. Competing court times, hockey operates at nighttime. That's when the leagues have been going. There's plenty of time for everybody. The two conflicting sports is probably going to be pickleball and basketball. Conflicting court surfaces, it's not. Because if you look at basketball, I don't know about where Erica is talking about more traction. If you look at a basketball court, it is glassy wood. The sport court companies that install this have solutions for this that work perfectly for all sports. Staff costs to oversee, no one oversees the boards in the hockey system. Ned Collins operated that single-handedly and was able to keep the boards in good condition and not have crazy maintenance costs. You know, onsite storage, this presentation, look at all these cons when hockey comes up.
Marston, your time is up. Sorry, your time is up. Next is Catherine Nolan again. Hopefully she can unmute herself. Catherine, please tell us the city you live in.
I live in Thousand Oaks.
Hi, Catherine.
I am a USA Pickleball Ambassador, along with a couple of the other speakers here, I think, tonight. USA Pickleball has, I think, more than 4 million members nationwide, and it's a very fast-growing sport, as other speakers have mentioned. In addition to that, we have formed a pickleball club in Ventura County. It's called Ventura County Pickleball Club. We have 275 members. In Thousand Oaks, we have six dedicated courts at Rancho Caneo Playfields, two dedicated courts at Del Prado. All of those are outdoors. There's also indoor pickleball one day per week at two different locations. And that's shared with basketball on the same court. So I know that indoors, pickleball and basketball can coexist. However, I've been told that the surface needed for roller hockey is different and that all three will not work together, is what I'm being told. CRPD is our Caneo Recreation and Park District, is our local parks organization, and they run three pickleball tournaments per year for us. And Ventura County Pickleball Club helps them run those. In addition, they allow us to rent the courts to do two more tournaments. So we have five tournaments a year. Each tournament brings in at least the Ventura County Pickleball Club tournaments, because I have information about that revenue. I'm not sure about CRPD's. But our tournaments bring in about $5,000 each for a two-day event. In addition to that, CRPD offers classes and leagues. All of these tournaments, all of the leagues and all of the classes fill up almost immediately. It's amazing how quickly they all fill up. There's definitely a need for more pickleball, and I think L.A. County is really lacking in the pickleball that is offered. I think Calabasas would do well to offer pickleball both indoors and outdoors. It's a great family community where we take care of our parks, and we're very protective. And if things are not right there, we've had a homeless problem at one of the parks, and we really band together to look after our parks. So it's a great community of people, and I think you'll be happy with the community that pickleball draws. If you're able to provide more pickleball for your community, I think that Calabasas would be well-served. And thank you very much.
Mari, before we go on to the next speaker, I do want to know if the timer is working, because we're cutting off some people and some people are continuing. And if it's not working, can you gauge and give people a short warning to wrap up their last sentence?
We'll do, Madam Mayor. The timer is working. Brendan Jasso? Brendan, please tell us.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. First off, thank you so much for all of your time tonight. I know it is 8:27, and I'm sure you want to be with your families and friends right now, so I really appreciate it. My name is Brendan Hasso. I'm currently a Malibu resident right now. I grew up in Simi Valley, went to Oak Park High School, and went to San Francisco State University. I grew up playing hockey at the DeAnza Rink, and I've had the opportunity of traveling all over the United States and Canada to play this beautiful sport. I'm really passionate about the camaraderie that we've built with all the different men and women at this rink over the past years. It's incredible to get out there with all these people and really enjoy ourselves, have a great cardio workout, and really have a good time and an escape to work out and have fun and play honestly one of the greatest sports on earth. I also love playing pickleball. And as a hockey player, I really see this as an opportunity to create inclusion for everybody on the same surface. As a hockey player, I see myself being very adaptable, along with all the other skaters, to where I do not see there being any issue with us being able to manage court times and, you know, slotting out different sections for basketball and pickleball and hockey altogether on the same court in beautiful Calabasas. Surface is not an issue. I know that we can all find a way to collaborate and make it happen so that we can keep the rink there, along with adding pickleball and basketball to make everyone happy. That's all I have to say. We're happy to all collaborate and find a way to make it work for everyone. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Stomel, please tell us the city you live in.
Ryan? Sorry, guys. So my name is Ryan Stomel. I am a Mountain View, Calabasas resident, and I grew up playing hockey at this rink, Tri-Valley specifically, for the last, I don't know, 30 years about. I've been playing roller hockey since the Roller Dome days. I attribute my current hockey skill to the Calabasas Rink, and I've continued to play there over the last six, eight months, and including when the league was running. I just want to urge the community to back the hockey players in this regard. I know you guys have a big decision on your hands, but, you know, there's been a lot of negative attitude towards hockey in this area. And if we were to throw some on the pickleball side, you know, it is the leading cause of geriatric injuries. So just to throw that out there. But, you know, hockey is for everyone. Loved it as kids, and I want to see it continue. So that's all. I'll give you guys back the time. Thanks.
Hayden Day? Hayden, please tell us the city you live in.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm an Hayden Day. I'm from Thousand Oaks, California. I also am a, going to throw my hat in the ring for the hockey side of the things. I've been playing hockey my entire life. I played junior hockey, left the state to play, and came home at DeAnza was always there every summer with great people and a huge community that is unmatched, and I would be very sad to see it go. And I know pickleball is a rising sport or kind of fad, if you will. And there's no reason why we all can't get along. I know that sounds kind of easier said than done, but I just, I really think that it would be a loss for the city of Calabasas to see that rink go and hundreds and hundreds of kids missing the opportunity to grow up and learn how to play hockey. Because California is not known for its hockey, but there are plenty of families that have picked it up and kids that have picked it up for lifelong because of DeAnza, and I'm one of them, and I'm sure there are plenty more. But I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys. I've remained my time to you guys.
Thank you.
Rose Beamer? Rose, please tell us the city you live.
Hi, I'm a proud homeowner of the city of Calabasas. I have three boys, ages 13, and 11-year-old twins. They all play roller hockey. We had the joy of meeting Mayor Moore recently at an event at the park. And I would be tremendously dismayed to see that court no longer. And uh I would be tremendously dismayed to see that court no longer be fit for roller hockey. It is such a deep part of our city's history. The more I've gotten to know about it, the more I understand how it's affected the lives of so many people. For my boys specifically, it has been something that they look forward to um more than any other sport they've ever played. And we lived uh walking distance from Gates Canyon Park. There are some tennis courts there. I know that my boys uh did a summer camp at Oaks Christian this past summer. And they played on their uh tennis courts there. So I'm not quite sure why the court would be dedicated to a sport that could be played a mere freeway exit away. So I firmly believe that this uh this court should be accessible for a variety of sports. And eliminating roller hockey from being one of those sports would be a detriment to our community. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's it for speakers. We have no other hands up.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you all for participating and making the time. We're now gonna go to council uh questions. Um, is there anyone that would like to start? If not, I'll just pick someone. All right, uh Councilmember Crowe, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we're starting with questions right now, right?
Correct.
So just a couple of questions on our survey. When we surveyed, and I guess this question is for Erica, when we surveyed on our strategic priorities and and did what I believe would be similar outreach, we got three hundred respondents, and in this survey, we got nineteen hundred respondents. Is there any statistics on how likely this is that we had multiple answers from individuals? And and that sort of stuff? I mean, how accurate do we think this survey might be?
Well, well, like I said, the the nineteen hundred responses was the highest responses that the city's received. Um, when I discussed this with our communications director. Um, the highest response survey was for the cell site uh service, which brought us a thousand responses. So with with that, statistically, it seems likely that there was some some doubled up um responses, but there's no way to validate that.
Okay, and then would, did we ask in the survey if they're a resident of Calabasas, or did we ask for their zip code?
Only zip code.
And when they responded nine one three oh one, did we count them as a resident or not?
Um, we counted them as a resident.
Okay, so then if they were Agora Hills nine one three oh one, they would have been counted as a resident as well?
That's correct.
Okay, and I think in the future, we probably need to to address that question in our survey with other than a zip code because of that issue that we have.
Sure.
Um, the the last question I had for you then would be, when you went to the pre-commission and they asked for financial information and you went back and they gave a response to recommend pickleball and basketball. Was that strictly based on the financial analysis that they made that decision, or did they give you any other reasons or recommendations?
Um, no, so we we presented it as uh to the pre, would you like to see uh continuance of roller hockey and or basketball? Um, and then we provided, similar to what we did here, the cost to do those things. Um, and they decided uh for pickleball and basketball. And that wasn't based solely on um the financials. That was also based on just programming and lack of roller hockey at that time.
Okay, and then one last question for you. There was mentioned tonight of using other parks possibly for pickleball. Has that been considered and explored, or is that a future item?
Um, that has been considered. Uh, we will look at some other locations. Um, the Gates Canyon, that that was tried, I believe, in two thousand sixteen to to uh a lack of uh support by the community in that area. Um, but we are looking to adding additional pickleball courts at the Tennis and Swim Center. Um, if we, when we restriped the community center's gymnasium, we could look at those areas where the pickleball uh advocates here had mentioned that maybe it's unsafe or there's not enough room and things like that. So we can look at that. We can definitely look at other locations. Um, but like some of the speakers said tonight, it's a growing sport. I think we're gonna really need, we're gonna outgrow our locations, so the more, the better. Um, but yes, we can definitely look at other locations as well.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Anyone else questions? No one else questions? Um, okay, Council, Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Just questions now, correct?
Questions, yeah.
Thank you. Real quick, uh Erica, this for you. There was a lot of discussion uh back and forth in in your report and also by some of the speakers, and I appreciated all the speakers as to the surfacing. That whether or not the surfacing could be used for all three, whether or not, and and your least presentation to us indicated that not not was not necessarily the case. Can you please clarify that? With at least factual information, because I heard speakers say we could do all three together. We could do pickleball and hockey together, and I just want some clarity on that if you can.
Sure, well, well, um technically, the the roller hockey court surface has to be a lot smoother. So the puck flows faster, they can skate on it. Um, and with pickleball and basketball needs a a little more traction, um especially with pickleball. Um, so we, Steph had talked to a representative from Taylor Tennis. Um, and they uh mentioned that there is a surface that could work for all three, but it's not gonna be ideal for all three. It's not going to be um as uh with as much traction for pickleball and not as smooth for roller hockey. So there's a surface that could work, that the the uh sports would just have to compromise and realize it's not gonna be uh the most ideal surface for either sport.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had is, have, I know we haven't for pickleball, because it's other than a a little bit here and there and in the community center when it was fully act open. Uh, we haven't had any, but have we received any revenue? That was also in the presentation for roller hockey by way of tournaments, leagues, et cetera, in the past, in the past twenty-five years.
In the past, it's a great question. In the past, uh the Tri-Valley uh Hockey League managed the uh any tournaments, leagues and things that happened at the at the sport court. Um, that was a facility rental agreement that they had with the city, um paying about seventeen thousand dollars a year. Um, and as one of the speakers mentioned, they said that it could raise uh two hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, so the city received eh about seventeen thousand dollars a year, and that was through um about twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen. Um, and then uh due to lack of of support or participation, uh Tri-Valley Hockey League went down to a hourly rental. Um, and used it for about ten hours a week through an hour hourly rental. So the city never received any uh revenue from the tournaments or leagues that Tri-Valley had hosted.
Okay, thanks very much.
All right, um. Councilmember Buzagian or Councilmember Weintraub, any questions?
I do have some.
If this is just questions, I don't have any, thank you. I have comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Weintraub.
Um, okay, I have a few questions. So Erica, regarding the survey, it almost seems like we can't really use those results, because there, if people were able to vote. We have no idea how many people voted twice or three times. So really, the results of the survey survey um really shouldn't be taken into consideration.
Correct, it's not a validated survey unless we just take it for what it is, the data.
Right, but it's hard, because if if some people think they just were able to vote once, I mean, I I'm not gonna use the survey results, because it just doesn't. It wasn't a like a scientific survey by any means. Um, and then I agree with what was said before. Next time we do a survey, we need to make sure it's the nine one three oh part of just Calabasas. Um, can you discuss a little bit about the sponsorship part that was brought up? What's what it, who is proposing it and what is being proposed?
Um, so with the LA Kings, uh they were brought into the picture giving, given the uh contact information. Um, so we had reached out and I've spoken a couple of times to uh one of their representatives. She's the Senior Vice President for Community and Hockey Development. Um, so we spoke a little bit about uh their participation and partnership. So corporate sponsorship uh came into that conversation. Um, and with corporate sponsorship, what they're looking to do is is partner with us um to help fund the sport court rehabilitation, but also have their logo maybe on the center court, on the dashboard, on the fencing. Um, so I wanted to bring that to council, because I know that's not a common thing with the city. Um, and if if that is the case, or the the direction that we wish to go, um that would have to be, you know, a policy decision and a policy written on how that would work for all of our city facilities. So that's how that came up with LA Kings wanting to partnership, partner with us to fund the sport court.
Okay, and then my last question, and I have a lot to say for comments, but in your best opinion, it does not seem that the three uses, hockey, pickleball and basketball can coexist on this one court for ideal um for ideal standards for each sport.
For ideal, correct. They can coexist. It can work. Um, we are open to doing that. I just uh would like to let the council know and each of the sport groups know that there would be some compromise there. And it would not be the most ideal as if it were there just one sport, but it all, it can definitely work.
Right, but then, I mean, if it's not ideal, then that leads to, you know, mostly people could end up being really dissatisfied with it. And then we're left with no sport being happy with the way the court's been built out.
That could happen, yes.
Um, have you seen, and my last question, have you seen any models in other communities that pickleball, roller hockey and basketball coexist on the same court?
Um, I believe there was one. Um, Amy Hamer, our facilities supervisor, looked that up. And I believe there was one, and I can't recall the city, uh but I believe the pickleball uh folks, it got so large uh that the roller hockey kind of just dissipated off of there. So they're not kind of, they're not coexisting really. It it basically turned into the pickleball basketball court.
Okay, and then I guess my last question is, if each sport is claiming there's such demand for their use on this court, how could it possibly, how could it possibly work that people are able to, like, how would signups work? Like, how would the, let me back up. How would the logistics work?
Yeah, that's something the team and I would really have to look at and and determine equitable use on open play, league time, uh pickup games. And then, of course, our basketball program time. So we would have to look at that and find the hours and availability and and work that into both sports getting equal time to do so. Um, and uh
So there wouldn't be one, out of the three sports, one wouldn't be favored over the other?
No, no, no. Right, right.
So it'd be like thirty-three percent for each sport?
Right, we would try to be as equitable as possible. Our basketball program obviously would would take precedence on that, but but we're not using that. Um, you know, a majority of the time. So we would definitely look at being equitable and have to come up with an operation and program plan for all three sports.
And then there would be pickup times for each sport as well?
Yes, we'd have to have some open play time, because we get a lot of open play or pickup games for basketball, so we would need to have those times incorporated as well. So we'd have to.
And then for any organized sport, they would have to pay a fee, like any organized league activity?
Correct. If there's any organized sport that wants to use uh the facility, they have to do a facility rental um with us, or we have to have some sort of agreement. Um, but any organized sport should be paying for use of the court, correct?
And is that being done now?
Um, that was being done, uh well, we haven't had any organized sports using it. Um
But like if a club, like a pickleball club or a roller hockey club is using the court, are they?
They would have to. Right now, there's there's none using it. Um, I I believe the Calabasas Hockey Club is the closest thing to being organized. That we'll have to look into that, but after Tri-Valley, um we haven't had any, so.
But what about, what is the Calabasas Roller Hockey Club? Is that an organized group?
Um, you know, this, I I just heard of it coming about. I I believe Mr. Linderman is is the is the the leader of that group or the president of that group, so we will reach out to him and and have that discussion on on how organized that is. And if there's times that he needs, um where we can work into a facility rental.
Thank you.
Okay, um I have a few questions as well. Councilmember Buzagian, you're, you have comments, right? Okay, I'll start with your comments in just a minute, if I could go through some questions. Um, so there hasn't been a single basketball representative here saying, we want basketball courts at Deanzo Park. And by the way, Deanzo Park, uh you've been calling it the sport court. When did it change names?
Oh, it's just the Deanzo Park Sport Court is what we call it, just because of the multi-sports that are there. Uh, yeah, so staff calls it that.
Official name.
Not an official name. It's a, it's just this.
Because it conjures up um multiple people playing different sports. And we're just beginning that discussion, so changing the name kind of implies that we are are already down the course, which um I do wanna ask about basketball. So there hasn't been anyone here clamoring for more basketball? Are your, are your lead, well, why do you think that is?
Um, I think that's because the community has maybe felt it's a, it's a pickleball versus roller hockey um issue, and basketball hasn't really been in in play with that. Um, so I I I can't speak for the public. I don't know why they they haven't.
Would these basketball courts be, would the league be outside, or are they practice courts?
There's, they're mostly practice. We do have some games there, but it's mostly for practice.
It's mostly for practice. So their lining isn't, their striping isn't quite as, needs to be as at, you know, professional. But that's interesting that it's only for practice. I mean, that's all, that's prime real estate for hockey or pickleball just for practice. And I know Algora closed their leagues, cor- correct?
They didn't close. They they had a basketball leagues, but because our league was more robust, um we we absorbed most of their uh participants. And so they don't compete with us any longer in that basketball.
So absorbing other players from outside a community is something we do. Okay, cause it seems like it was a negative if people played from outside Calabasas hockey. But it's not at all. I just wanna make sure that people know that they're welcome.
Of course.
Okay, um, so why um, why don't we have more availability for the hockey players right now? The rink's there, the nets are there, they're only allowed two days. Wh- why is that?
I think right now they have more than two days. I believe we're putting out the net Saturday and Sunday, and I think they're there Tuesday and Thursday as well. Um, the reason why we hadn't had uh the the nets available before, um there wasn't, there wasn't a request, there wasn't a need. Um
Okay, so maybe if the Cali, if if there was more kind of coordination, oh, we can get the nets more, maybe we'll start up something else. I'm assuming that the city would do the leagues, the hockey league that Tri-Valley used to do?
We can look at that. Our staff doesn't necessarily have the skill set for that, um but we can definitely look into uh running a league for sure.
Um, and I believe that's something the Kings said they would do. They would help with programming, both youth programming. Um, special events kind of introduce people not only to uh roller hockey, but also to floor ball, which is an all-ability sport and a special Olympic sport as well. So um I know that it was beyond just having their their name up, and I would like much more information about that. I think that we could very easily, well, not getting into opinions, but have an LA Kings with a hockey connection. Have the Dodgers with baseball. Um, I have a few more questions. Um, is this presentation or something like it, was all of this information presented to the pre? This is very detailed.
Um, most of this information was uh submitted to the pre, yes. Um, it was a little more detailed for council, but but overall, yes, it was.
Do you think that they had enough information about the history of hockey and the meaning that it it had to to the community?
I think Amy did a very good job as our, as the department historian to uh communicate that to the pre. Um, there wasn't any any requests to find out additional information or uh details in that area. Um, so yes, we felt it was, it was adequate information.
You know, I should have had, um for the public, full disclosure, my children, my three children grew up playing roller hockey at Deanzo. So I spent many, many years um watching games, barbecuing, connecting with other families. It was really a lot of fun. Um, and also, I play pickleball competitively. And in fact, I've had a geriatric injury, a meniscus surgery. So uh I can see both sides of the of the argument. So I wanna go back to Gates Canyon, where I think was the, was was that the only place we've So I want to go back to Gates Canyon where I think was the, was was that the only place we've ever tried to put? Pickleball nets on a bus, on a tennis court?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, I I think so too. And you said the community didn't like it. Why not?
Um, and speaking with Amy, uh, I don't know the exact reason. Um, it didn't go well. The tennis players weren't very happy with sharing the the court with the. Uh, pickleball players. Um, beyond that, I don't know the exact reason on on why. Um, it wasn't. Uh, they couldn't coexist, but. Um, that's usually pretty common with tennis players, uh, not really liking pickleball or to be strict for pickleball on the tennis court. Um, but I I can ask Amy, I could get more information on that.
Are we, what's under consideration for other sites? For pickleball?
Um, like I said, the Tennis and Swim Center, uh, Councilman Buzajin gave us some ideas and and in a meeting that we discussed. Uh, so some land areas to look at. Um, and then, of course, the community center and how we can better strike it so we can get uh more play there as well.
Okay, did you or any of your staff go visit any of these other roller rinks? Burbank or? Um, I think there's El- El Segundo, maybe. I'm not quite sure. I don't know where they are. Do. Has anyone gone and looked and and talked to people who run these leagues on?
I know that Amy had reached out to uh some other organizations. I know Moore Park has has a rink. Um, Camarillo, I believe. Um, so yeah, she reached out to see the uh, the participa- participation in that. That was part of her. Um, recommendation and and it was shown to to be a declining uh sport in those areas. Um. Uh, but yeah, again, I I want to make it clear um that. The parks department or the community services department does not have a preference on uh pickleball or roller hockey. I think they can all coexist, um, if if that's if everyone compromises. Um, so I don't think it's one versus the other. It's just about safety. I'm thinking about safety and liability and things of that nature. But they can definitely coexist if everyone compromises.
Okay, last question. Um, as far as outreach, I agree with Councilmember Weintraub that the survey is unreliable. Um, I, I um. I. Uh, what other outreach did you do besides that survey?
Well, we went through the, the, you know, did our civic process, which is to go through the pre. Um, and get public comment that way. We also put it out on social media. The survey, um, you know, unfortunately was flawed in being able to take more than once, but. We put that on social media. We did it on the website. We put a Q R code at the at the site. Um, staff went out and spoke to to folks uh to encourage them to take the the survey. Um, so th- those are the 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 areas that we did outreach.
Primarily the survey being promoted. Is that the, I mean, can we fix that so that doesn't happen again?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Um, so did you ever sit down and meet, like, have a meeting with them, with the hockey people and? I mean, you and I went to the rink, which I think was really informative.
Sure.
Um, but just to, or with the pickleball people?
Yes, I met with the, with uh the pickleball representative. I'm, I met with him. I also met with Ned Collins, and we had a one-on-one to talk about. Um, the history of roller hockey and what it means to the community. And obviously, when we went there, I met probably twenty people. Um, to talk about the same thing. So yes, um, and Amy has as well. Um, she has a relationship with with Ned and and the roller hockey folks and um. So yes, we have met with both and and believe both sports are, um, if it's a community need, we're here to satisfy that need. So. That's what we're here to do tonight. If uh the policy direction is to have me uh and the team put that, put the roller hockey. Um, and pickleball and basketball court on on Danza's court, we're we're happy to do that.
Okay, um, so I have a few comments, but I'll wait. Uh, Councilmember Weintraub, did you have another question? Your hand is up.
I just wanted to clarify that I think for our middle school and basketball children, pickup basketball. Is a huge pastime, and I don't think those people are calling into our meetings, but I know because there are so few limited public courts. That if you look in our private gated communities, our middle schoolers and high schoolers are constantly using those courts. So I know there's a huge demand for basketball courts, but so many times they're just unavailable for people in our community.
Great, thank you. All right, um, any other questions? Otherwise, we'll start with comments and thoughts and Councilmember Buzajin.
Okay, um, I I would also concur that I largely discounted the survey. There there was one other reason, you know. Most of the. Uh, applicant, most of the people who took the survey, in my view, were not from the city. Um, they had to self-report whether they were from the city, and as it was, almost half of them reported they were not. And I'm I'm suspect about that other half. So in the future, if you're going to do surveys, I'd like to see the surveys tailored to our residents. Are I, anyone's welcome to play and use our facilities, but our taxpayers are actually paying for this. So. That's who I'm really concerned with as far as accommodation. That's my first point. Um, second point. Um, the discussion about revenue, I'm not. Uh, you know, I don't want to be wasteful, but I'm not as concerned with revenue as long as it's serving a public purpose. People expect to be paying their tax dollars to have recreational facilities. And we should not just be simply totaling the amount of potential revenue and then making a decision based on that. So I I largely discounted that. Um. I've been thinking a lot in the last day or two about the naming rights issue, and I. I would shy away from that. I don't know exactly how much money's on the table, but I, we have not done that too much in the past. And if it's going to be actually a permanent feature of the uh structure where it's like. Uh, painted in or or engraved in somewhere, I would not, I would not want to do that. Um, I would be more amenable to a banner type of thing if that's, if that's what they're paying for. Um, or and and other publicity, other things for publicity. Um. I want to talk just for a moment about uh other potential areas. I spend a lot of time at Danza Park. So I'm familiar with the contours. Um, there is underutilized space in Danza Park that could be used to expand the court areas. I have not measured it. I don't know how much additional space, but if you go beyond the the uh enclosure. And you go north a little bit to where it starts to slope, there is a grassy area that's almost completely unutilized. There are some benches at the very end. That area, in my view, could give us at least one other court, if not more. Um, and I think that should be looked at, uh, especially if we're going to have multiple activities there. Um, there is also a flat graded dirt area. It is to- is a plateau. It is totally flat. And it is on the um corner of Lost Virginous Road and Lost Hills Road. You could enclose that area, you could fence it and build a foundation, and you could put at least one court there. Um, and people could park in the parking lot and just, it's it's right there. It's the next lot over. So I think it's uh an ideal location if you're looking for additional space. Um. I like the idea of considering other parks for for one of these uh activities, although I don't know exactly um if that would would fit. One of the things that I I I found a little discouraging in the last couple of weeks is. Um, the idea that we're going to try to exclude one sport over the other. Um, my, my feeling is that uh we're best off compromising here. Um, I realize that no one's going to get an entirely ideal court to their specifications, but we can accommodate all three sports. It will mean, um, yes, it may be a little bit more striping. It may be. Uh, the surface is not exactly what somebody wants, and nets aren't exactly what somebody wants, but. Really, if I have to choose, I I'm uncomfortable with choosing. I think there's a calling for all three. And I personally think the only reason the people from basketball aren't here is because they're they're not on the chopping block. If if there had been a report saying that we were considering getting rid of basketball, we'd have them here too. So um, my hope is that staff can come up with some creative suggestions. Along the uh lines of what I have suggested or others and keep all three sports. And not exclude anybody from participation. We had some very heartfelt letters and some public testimony today that augmented that. This has meant a lot to people growing up here, and it would be a shame if we had to stop offering any of these activities. And Madam Mayor, that is the extent of my comments. Thank you.
Um, Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I um. I, again, the the letters we all got, the emails, the texts are greatly appreciated, while I also. Uh, s- discount. Uh, to a large extent, the survey, I listened to the comments and the people calling in tonight, and. Uh, majority of them are Calabasas residents, as had they have indicated. So to me, that is very important and very telling. And if I tallied as best I could, as we do when the kids come. To City Hall and and their their uh council members for a day, and they tell us what they want, it seemed fairly equal that between. The roller hockey and the pickleball, and some wanted both or some wanted all three. Um, as far as the basketball goes, uh, absolutely, those courts are utilized and very important for. Practice, especially for the little kids. I coached in these leagues for the city for. For many, many years, and especially little kids learning the basics without without this, the community center being open. Uh, which reduces the court time. Also, those courts are invaluable for them to learn in addition to the pickup game. So. Whether they're here or not, the the, that is something that's very important to the city as well, as well as Ned and. Tri Valley ho- hockey, uh, the basketball courts are also important. Pickleball, I have never played it. I'm not a competitive uh pickleball player. I look forward to someday playing it. I know it's one of the fastest-growing. Sports right now and probably looking forward from what I understand in the next number of years. It's grown through the pandemic, but it's going to keep growing. So. It's a very exciting opportunity for our city to get ahead and find courts. If it i- if it's there, great. If it's elsewhere, that's great too. Um, we need more courts. We need more fields in our city. We need more recreational opportunities for our youth and seniors alike. So. I am supportive of that. Um, to me, it's what is the best? And the best use and the most use we'll get for those courts, for the Deans Park courts. With the residents in mind, and I think we've heard tonight, it's really a split, at least tonight, and then. In the emails we've received and comments and uh the L A Kings have reached out to all of us, I'm sure. Uh, so both roller hockey and pickleball makes sense. Uh, the second part of that to me is safety, and the most important thing maybe for all. Kids, all adults who play there. If there is an issue with the surfaces that would lead to a problem. An increased problem with safety, that's something I would want to know, and that would help me. Probably change my mind on the, on the determination of all three sports. And the costs we already have, we have the recommendation from the pre, and. I have not heard a staff recommendation, uh, and based upon our discussions tonight. I, it sounds like there's a desire to have all three sports coexist to the best of their ability, and those would be my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowe?
Uh, yes, thank you. I I would have to say, first of all. I grew up in Reading, Massachusetts, and uh every December we waited for the pond to freeze because that's where we had to go play hockey. And then we had to take our shovels down there and shovel the snow off of the pond so that we could make our own rinks. Um, I have not played hockey since I moved to Calif- California in nineteen ninety, uh, so it's been a while. Um. But I I do know, and I did hear about. How important hockey is to our youth, and uh, and I think that's very important that we remember that. Uh, and I think pickleball is is important to a different generation. Um, and and that's okay. We have a lot of members of our community that we have to serve here. Um, I I did want to say in answer to a few things that I heard, um. Gates Canyon um wasn't well received, but I I heard that was two thousand sixteen or two thousand eighteen, and I don't think pickleball had the. The the momentum that it has in twenty twenty-two. Uh, so I bet you if we looked at Gates Canyon again, uh, we'd probably find a lot more support there. Um, Gray Barber Park also was not mentioned, but has a basketball court that could be uh. Uh, used as well. And I I mention these because I'm going to suggest that we do go with the all three sports there, like I've heard from a few council members already. But I think once we start getting all three there, it's going to get crowded, and so we do need to continue to look for other places to house any of the other sports. Um, with that, I want to point out that. The only place you can play hockey in Calabasas right now is at Deans. Uh, pickleball could be served in many locations. Uh, we do have several basketball locations, but you know, hockey does require. A rink. It requires a board, so we're, we are limited to that one location, and I think it's going to have to uh. Uh, be carefully considered in our scheduling. Um, the the last thing I want to mention is this, there's been some talk about the survey, about residents, about non-residents, and I think it's important that. We are here to serve everyone. Uh, we want people to be welcome to come to Calabasas, and and even though they're not residents, they probably stick around and and grab a bite to eat. At one of our restaurants after they play a game or whatever, so they are supporting our community. Uh, but when it comes down to the final dollar. You know, it's a, it's taxpayer money, as was mentioned earlier, and we need to support our residents, and when we have other services that are being used by other groups. Uh, it's okay for us to uh to charge a fee that's healthy enough to recoup our costs, and we should certainly look at that. Uh, when it comes to the Kings and sponsorship. I'd much rather see the Boston Bruins there at Center Ice, but I don't think that's going to happen here in Southern California. Uh, I I don't see the Kings being controversial. Uh, as a corporate sponsor, uh, so I would actually be okay with that. Uh, probably on the boards or something like that as opposed to in the midst of the rink. Um. Those are my thoughts, and uh I'll pass it to uh the next council member.
And that would be Councilmember Weintraub.
Thank you. Um, just to start, I'm not in favor of any corporate sponsorship. I think it's just opening up something that. We don't want to do in our small community at our local parks. I think it's just making it more. Commercial than it needs to be. So that's my opinion on sponsorship. And I think it's also allowing an outside entity to have more say in in our programming and things instead of staff. I hear what everyone's saying about trying to accommodate all three, and it's very hard to pick and choose. And I'm willing to support all three, but I think by doing that, in the end, we're not really going to make any group happy. But I'm going to leave that to staff. It's like hard for me to say, sure, we're going to put all three together, but it's not going to be on an ideal court. So as much as everyone is saying like pickleball and roller hockey are saying they're okay coexisting. Will they, will everyone really be okay with the final product? And I'm not an expert on court design and layout and materials, but it's something I'd want to look very closely at. I really like James' idea about looking at alternate sites. We're definitely void of recreation in our community, even though we have great parks and spaces. We really don't have enough for the demand of our community, and that's been an issue forever. No soccer field, limited basketball courts, now pickleball, one roller hockey. We just don't have enough. So I think we really also need to focus our efforts on looking to develop. Alternate sites. So I don't mean to really be all over the place with my comments. I want to see all three, three sports accommodated. But I want to make sure we're not just trying to appease people by making that decision, and then in the end, making everyone unhappy with the final product. But again, I'm not an expert. I would leave that to staff. Um, also, yeah, I just, I want to keep these. I understand people are traveling from all over the county, but we also have to pay attention that these are local parks and residential neighborhoods and. That the residents in our community need to be able to go to these parks for pickup games just to. Play burn-off steam, that I don't want to see these courts occupied all week by organized activities. I want to make sure that they're open for pickup games and free time.
Okay, anything else?
That's all. Thank you so much.
I have comments, and they're kind of scattered um as well. I'm gonna. I'm going to say straight up. Um, I am very, I'm concerned about, a- as Councilmember Weintraub is, with three entities sharing this space. Especially when one of the groups, and and I'm a pickleball player. Doesn't seem interested at all in coexisting with hockey. Um, and I know the pickleball culture. It is a force to be reckoned with. You've read the stories, how they're just kind of. Kind of encroaching in all sorts of. Uh, recreational places, and I know we need the courts, but I want to be mindful of what we're talking about. This is a. Hockey rink, uh, um. Floor ball for Special Olympics and teens and all abilities. It's it's so unique. It has such a rich history. I'm very concerned about. I'm very concerned about the pickleball component becoming overpowering. So what I would like to see is I would like to see us look to alternative places. I'd like to see us look at MOUs with this with the elementary schools. They have those large, big blacktops. Let us resurface them and open them up on the weekends. And you know, what we need are big, flat, open spaces. So I would say temporarily pickleball, but we've got the community center for them. We I I'm not sure what happened gate at Gates Canyon. I heard it was noise. So noise may be a factor. But I would want to protect the primary user of that, of the Deans Court, the one that can't go anywhere else, and that's the hockey program. I was discouraged to hear that, well, no, we're not going to program anything because we don't have the expertise. Well, we can contract with, I'm sure, one subcontract out with one of these Calabasas Hockey Club professionals or Francisco, the L A Kings sportscaster, somebody to help us get leagues going. I mean, we have the most robust leagues. I I can't imagine it continuing without leagues. And I don't want it just to be adult nighttime. They the children need to be able to access during prime time and on weekends and mornings. So I'm hoping if we're going to make it three, which I would prefer only hockey and basketball, that the hockey program, because of its inability to go anywhere else, be given priority scheduling and programming. And I hope my colleagues will join me in that because I think we need to look to the future and kind of protect what we're going to be regrowing, frankly, in in the community. Sponsorship, I think it has to be done very select selectively, very carefully, and it has to be a a real connection, as I started to say. And I think it would be worth at least having that next conversation with the L A Kings about what it would look like. So we can really have a a really good idea. I'm sensitive to to corporate sponsorship, but if it was directly affiliated with the sport, and maybe that's the criteria. L A Dodgers baseball, L A Lakers, you know, basketball league. I think that brings a lot of prestige and excitement to the community and to the children. So I I hope my colleagues will support that. Just almost the the last thing I want to add is I'd like to see staff sit down with Calabasas Hockey Club and with an ambassador from pickleball and work on the lines. I saw a lot of extra lines that didn't have to be there. I know that from hockey. I know now that the basketball is just for practice. I'm sure that we could remove a a few lines there. Pickleball lines are pretty set. So I I would like to see you work out the ring. So I guess if I was going to ask for my colleagues to support something else, it would be to consider that the roller hockey, the floor ball, the skating on Friday night, teen nights, that all of the possibilities, I mean, there used to be lacrosse on 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 foot there, that all of the vast opportunities are are considered. And I don't know if when when Erica, you said equity, I'd I'd almost want to give them, you know, it for be forty twenty twenty or something like that, just so that they can have the room to grow if they need to. And then that we look at the striping and simplify it, and we look at having the L A Lakers come back to us with a project. And I see councilmember Weintraub. And then anybody else that wants further comments on the council, let's go around the table some more. So councilmember Weintraub.
Right. So that's where I disagree, like the, I've heard a lot from a lot of people about hockey, but an overwhelming amount amount of people about pickleball. And that's why I was saying that if we're gonna share this court, to me, it would have to be done equally. Like pickleball is a growing sport. And I mean, the amount of letters, I'm not going by the survey, but the I got. I was inundated in a good way with letters about pickleball, pickleball from residents who don't normally write, that were passionate about this. And I did not, I received letters from roller hockey, and we've heard from people tonight, but majority of the letters I received were not from Calabasas residents. And I understand we're, and to me, I have to weigh what I'm hearing from our own community. And I'm not saying to not have roller hockey, but I'm saying that we have to also grow and embrace a new sport. And I think that's what we haven't done in the past. We just keep things the way they are. And here's an opportunity. We're hearing from the community. They want more. They're looking for more. So I wouldn't want to give roller hockey priority. If we're gonna do this, I would divide it into three. And that's why I thought the idea of looking for more courts was so important, like we should invest our efforts to find more space. And then when we do, we can come back and like reimagine this court because it's going to be crowded. And I still don't think everyone's going to be happy, but I I want to acknowledge the interest that we're hearing from people with pickleball. So that's my comments.
I guess I would just respond that there are options for pickleball players. If if we proceed as if we're directing staff to look at at high at schools and MOUs and tennis courts. There is sideways, and I'm afraid that they're gonna just, you know, barrel over, especially if staff isn't programming it. If they're, you know, hands off, which I hope they aren't.
But I I mean, to do any of that's going to take time. And I mean, we already use the schools. We already use their facilities. I mean, I don't know what more, but none of that's going to happen like overnight. Unless we're looking at our, the quickest fix is our own facilities. But I agree in the long run, I agree in the long, long run, looking at the schools as well.
Yeah, I think that's part of the, and and can can Kindon or Erica, can you respond to the the large parcel at Lost Hills and Lost Virginus that councilmember Buzagian mentioned?
And the other one.
And the other one, but in, yeah. Yeah, or Erica, Amy.
Do you want me to keep that one? Okay, Mayor and Council, so the the idea to look at that parcel or that section of the parcel adjacent to Deans Park was something that councilmember Buzagian mentioned to us tonight. We have not had an opportunity to explore it. I I think one thing that the council needs to to remember is there's a need to resurface the court. And so whether we look at other facilities or build facilities, there still is a minimal cost of at least one hundred and fifteen thousand to resurface the courts. Everything else will be then added to that with, you know, the dasher boards, nets or whatever it is. But there is a need to resurface the court for continued use and safety. And so a again, we'll need to do the courts. We'd like to move forward with the courts. If there is an interest in looking at other sites for for pickleball, we can explore that. Those would come with additional costs. Now you're talking in, you know, just you you're talking grading mobilization of equipment, you're talking running electricity, you're talking about safety features on that corner with guardrails. And I'm not saying this to be prohibitive on that. I think we need to explore it. But a a an initial project or a project that's a startup is much different than resurfacing and repurposing a court.
That's hopeful. Thank you. You know, it brings to mind the the pandemic money is the APRA, APRA. You only a lot allocated forty-five thousand here. And I know some are CPIs funds dedicated, but the other two parks that we're going to look at tonight have hundreds of thousands of dollars. And is there a reason why or could we put more towards this project?
We we would have to. So and that's a good point. And that's one of the things I wanted to make sure that the council was clear on. If there's an interest, which there seems to be to do all three sports, we have about a deficit of about ninety thousand. And so we would need to allocate an additional ninety thousand of ARPA funds or general fund monies to this project if we do all three sports. And that would be one of the the requests that we'd asked for in the motion. And clarity on that is to be able to utilize general fund or ARPA funds if all three courts are are striped in that way.
For ninety thousand?
It's about an additional ninety thousand, yeah.
I don't know how like, Councilmember Kraut and then Mayor Potem Shapiro.
Yeah, thank you. As long as we're going around again, I wanted to weigh in on a few of the the thoughts that were expressed here. The court is currently surfaced and played for both basketball and for hockey. Where hockey, you're you're rolling on your blades and you're sliding a puck across the ground in basketball. I imagine basketball is quite similar to pickleball where you need to make a short stop. So I I I don't really understand that there's a conflict between surfacing for the three sports. I think we can make a a surface that would work for all of them. I'm still in favor of all three sports because I think we need a quick place that we can start some pickleball games. I think that's important that our community support that. But as we talk about these other sites, I would hope that as we find other places for pickleball, that that we make sure we maintain that presence for hockey. As I, as I mentioned, we can play pickleball in in many different locations throughout the city here. To build a new hockey rink is a a lot bigger endeavor than to re-stripe the basketball courts at Gray Barber or something like that for pickleball. So we need to find a way to balance all of them. And as we grow into it, we need to make sure that that hockey doesn't get edged out.
Mayor Potem Shapiro?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. The comment relates to, in this, in this case, for instance, the L A Kings. I would, in addition to our going forward, if we're going to and authorize ninety thousand additional funds, I would like us at the same time to look at the opportunities and see what the Kings are willing to do in a partnership with our city, see what it would entail, and also see what they would provide by building a program, hopefully, that would go for many, many more years and decades to to come in the future for our youth and and with their name behind it. So I'm not looking for some big corporate sponsorship of any kind. I'm looking more of a partnership if we could have that, or at least explore it.
Okay. Um, let me see if I can summarize what this motion would be. Matt, maybe you have done so already, but here, would you like to go first?
Um, I'm happy to summarize what I've heard with obviously subject to council direction. So what I've heard is staff should move forward with all three sports at this time on an equal basis with the necessary funding to come from ARPA or general funds as available and to open sponsorship discussions with the L A Kings, to return to council for further action, depending on what their proposal is, and to identify alternative pickleball locations to return for further assessment. And I'll invite Kindin to set to adjust that.
I I have a couple more things. They're really not ordinance, but they're direction if my colleagues agree. And that is for staff to start conducting stakeholder meetings with Calabasas Hockey and an ambassador from pickleball, just so that everyone's familiar and the expectations are set and everyone understands what the what the cooperative arrangement will look like. And then, yes, you have the L A Kings partnership in there. And the other thing was, as part of the stakeholder meetings, I'm I'm guessing perhaps more requests to access the court right now may come out and and staff will will look at if that's possible, too. Those are my notes. Is there any?
See, Mr. Mika has had his hand up.
Yes.
Mayor, council members, what I would suggest and highly recommend is that we simplify the that motion quite a bit. In fact, what I'd like to do is break break this down into several different motions. This will help staff to be very clear on what the direction is from council. And there is no misunderstanding with that. So if, Madam Mayor, if we could, I'd like to simplify that with, first of all, the, you know, the the court striping. You know, if there's a motion for all three, if we could just do a motion and a vote on that, and then we could go to an allocation of, you know, additional funding and then down to the line to sponsorship and then some of the other things that you mentioned. So again, it is very clear the direction to the staff on this, please.
Matt, did you get that?
I did. Yeah, that makes sense to me as well. It would have, it it makes sense.
Can you repeat that back then?
So the first motion would be to direct staff to move forward with striping the Deans Rink for all three sports.
Right, but I mean, there can be simplification done, and I'm sure that they'll do that then. Okay, restriping for all three courts.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor Potem.
I was gonna say for clarification, it's also resurfacing, to say, it's not just.
Restriping, resurfacing.
I want to make sure we're clear. Okay, I would make that motion then.
Oh, you'll make that motion. Is there a second? I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilmember Kraut, second set. All in, roll call, please, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Buzagian?
Hi.
Councilmember Kraut?
Hi.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maure?
Yes.
Grab zero.
Matt, I think the next one, I think within, since we've now have a unanimous vote on the three, which is wonderful, that we would need additional funding. And so a motion from the council to either use ARPA or general fund monies to bridge that gap in in the amount of up to ninety thousand at this time.
Point of order be ninety-five thousand. The cost is two sixty and the funds are one sixty-five.
Thank you. We'll do ninety-five.
And that would be in order.
Do I hear one hundred?
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I will second that.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Buzagian?
Hi.
Councilmember Kraut?
Hi.
Councilmember Weintraub? Councilmember Weintraub?
I am so sorry that we're having such internet issues. I.
Mayor Potem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maure?
Yes.
Very size here again.
And then council, maybe the next one is on sponsorship and.
Or part partnership.
Partnership?
Yeah. It may not include money or corporate, but at least it could include helping us establish programs.
What I I wasn't clear where we left this off. You mean just exploring it? I mean, nothing is approved yet.
Nothing is approved. This is just, there's a majority that is interested in hearing more about, not only if there's a a financial contribution, but what the programming is to with the L A Kings. Mayor Potem Shapiro, is that accurate, do you think?
Yes, it is.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve.
And a second? I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Buzagian?
Hi.
Councilmember Kraut?
Hi.
Councilmember Weintraub?
No.
Mayor Potem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maure?
Yes.
Four one.
And I think the last motion would be to direct staff to continue to identify other pickleball locations and return for future council action.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make, and I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, ready?
Councilmember Buzagian?
Hi.
Councilmember Kraut?
Hi.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maure?
Yes.
Five zero.
Um, the other, I don't know that it's a motion, but it was to for staff to connect with the stakeholder groups to start kind of understanding what this would look like. And hearing if there's more option opportunities to open it, open up the rink to like Friday night skate nights or or more skating, just more opportunities. I don't think you need direction to do that. I would think you would do that anyway. But Erica, do you feel like you need direction?
Mayor, if I could jump in there, I think, again, if we're going back to the discussion of whether there's equitable uses at the at the park, I think we do need direction on that from the council. If there's if there's a preference to favor or allow more court time for one sport from the council, we'd like to hear that so we can.
Note, I mean, the same with basketball. She, earlier she had, not this meeting, but she told me that it's been programmed, the basketball courts. Is that correct? Correct, Erica? Uh huh, yeah.
If I could jump in, I think we might be talking about two different, P, two different things using the same language. One would be to reach out to the stakeholder groups for the three sports as a part of the resurfacing project. Two is reaching out to the three courts regarding, the three sports regarding programming. That is something that's above and beyond our existing work and would need direction at the ti- at this times. To my knowledge, the city doesn't program, uh, pickleball nor roller hockey. We only program basketball. We would need council direction to do programming affirmatively for the other two sports. As we, we don't need direction to reach out to everybody for the project. It's the programming that we would need direction.
Well, okay, but basketball is already programmed. Uh, well, I guess has to wait to striping, but it sounds like it's pickup, but. They're playing there right now is the point. Um, if you, if it needs a motion to direct staff to work on. I mean, just. I mean, there's been, there's been, the bottom line is there's been a huge disconnect between staff and the roller hockey program. They. It's, you know, there's zero programming. So if we want to maintain zero programming, I don't think that's, you know. That's not what we do. We look at opportunities to create. You know, programming, so. I, I'm afraid that if we don't direct staff, I mean, we've heard that we don't, we don't have the expertise in this. I think we need, they need a little help finding it or. Some encouragement.
I think that's where we would look for council direction to then put resources into that program. And that be, would be a motion is to direct staff to develop programming for the other two sports.
Well. Um, then the same should be for pickleball too then.
Right, I would expect to be all three.
Well, I have a question. Does it have to be? Does it have to be programming or time allotted?
Well, it would, programming would equal time allotted.
But to me, programming is something like organized by staff, whether, you know, coming up with a calendar saying. You know, thirty percent this or whatever, to make it divide.
I mean, programming.
Um, but that's like, that's, I, I mean, that would go, I would think that would go to the pre, that'd be a staff discussion. Isn't that like totally outside the scope of what we're talking about?
They used to have. I mean, it's, it's nothing new. It's what existed before.
I think the issue, if I could jump in, maybe that the prior program.
Kraut, and, uh, Erica's after you, Matt.
All right, yeah, of, a quick comment. My, I think the issue may be. That the existing roller hockey program was run independent of the city. They use a city facility, but it was a private nonprofit. To recreate a program like that could be done by the city, but we would need direction to do so. That's the heart of it. And that's what we would look for council, uh, council direction to develop that kind of a program. And I would defer back to. To Kinden and Erica on what that looks like, but we don't have direction to recreate a program that wasn't run by the city.
I'm gonna go to Councilmember Kraut and, and you know, that probably would come out of her meeting with stakeholders, but Councilmember Kraut?
Yes, uh, Matt, Matt actually mentioned where I was going, which is that there was a hockey league. And there currently isn't. So, uh, do we want to start a Calabasas Hockey League? Do we want to, you know, that sort of stuff needs to be decided here, or at least at some point in, in to give staff direction. But then the separate is the scheduling of the facility, because we need to schedule it so that. Three sports can coexist there. Uh, and in that respect, I just wanna say that. I think we do need to find something close to equity right now between the three sports. And then when we produce other alternatives offsite, we can look at giving preference to one or more other sports. Uh, but it is a very complicated issue. I, I don't know that I've heard. Uh, a summary of what kind of direction so far. I think this is gonna involve a deeper discussion.
Well, Erica's hands up, and I bet she has an idea. Go ahead, Erica.
Um, I, I was just gonna mention that I, I don't think we need direction on, on staff working with the groups to determine programming. Um, if, if we're looking at equity and time, I think that's where we need the direction. Um, if there's a certain amount of time that you want us to allot for roller hockey or any other sport. Um, but for programming purposes, of course, we would meet with the stakeholders and, and figure out what, what they need. I mean, that's our job. That's Amy's job. So we, we could definitely do that. I don't think that's a direction that council needs to give us at this.
Agree. Um, Councilmember Bazaian?
I, I would just say before we get into these details, I would need to have from staff. Knowledge of how many, you know, them to count like how much time and how many people are using it at what times. And we're really not prepared to do that tonight.
No, in fact, Erica, why don't you, um, come back at a, a later meeting after you've met with the stakeholders and you've. And if you need anything else from us, but, um, Kindon, what do you think? Then we'll just take a look at what the group has come up with and staff recommends.
I thi- I think that works, Erica. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, Erica, Amy, thank you both very much. I know Amy's out there somewhere. Um. And thank you to all of the members of the public for, for coming here. It's an interesting thing we're embarking on and. Will need full cooperation from everybody to, uh, see how it looks, but it, it's, it's, it's a go. So thank you. Council, do you wish to have a break? Or should we proceed?
Yeah, I'd like to take a break if we can.
Okay, so it is, um. I don't have a clock on my screen.
It's nine thirty-eight.
Nine thirty-eight.
Okay, how about nine forty-five? Thereabouts. Okay, bye-bye. Be sure and mute and turn off your video.
Hey, let's go, chop-chop. Everyone's back, Madam Mayor. You're muted.
Okay, welcome back. Um, we're going to continue. Erica, you're going to, um. Give us a presentation on Gates Canyon?
Yes, I am. I will share the screen once more. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Uh, so, uh, the next park project we're gonna talk about is Gate Canyon's Park, which is the replacement of playground equipment and pour-in-place rubber surfacing. Background, um. In March of this year, safety issues were identified with the playground structures and the pour-in-place rubber surfacing. Uh, so the tot structure was closed, um, at Gates Canyon and elements of the youth structure were removed. Um. In May, staff presented a recommendation to city council on the replacement of the playground structure, and it was recommended to staff to return with additional information. Since then, staff's been working, uh, with Little Tykes and Unlimited Play on various playground options, um, as well as other options for. A city council review and approval. So at this time, um, here's our play structure options. There's a one point one million approved budget through the CIP and other funding, which is grant, grant source funding. Um, so. There's three options that, that staff is, uh, recommending or proposing to the city council. If we do a one million dollar structure, obviously no fundraising is needed for that. Um, one point five, uh, million dollar structure requires four hundred thousand. And then nine hundred thousand for a two million dollar structure. Um, and I, I broke it down this way, uh, because of the last council presentation. Um, I said up to two million, so I was trying to give council a better idea of the breakdown of, of costs for, um, each of these. Proposed areas. So this is a one million dollar, uh, structure that Little Tykes had done, just to give you an idea of what that would look like and consist of. Um, this is actually Brandon's Village, uh, that. Little Tykes had, uh, placed this proposed, um, playground on. Um, of course, that is open to, uh, public input. This is just for proposal purposes. And then this is a two million dollar, um, playground that was done superhero themed. Just for your, uh, review. So I wanted to talk a little bit about to council at the last council meeting, um. Uh, I didn't explain the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing, um, to the best of, of my ability. So I just wanted to bring it up again. And talk to council about what, what it is and, um, what that does for us. So a cooperative purchasing program. Combines multiple buyers' requirements on a single contract, um, to aggregate volume and raise purchasing power of each partic-. Participating entity, um, which can save buyers' time. Um, and then remove the competitive bid process, cause it's already done by the company, which is Sourcewell in this, uh, scenario. Um, and the contracts also offer scale and negotiation leverage that helps buyers or agencies attain better and more affordable pricing. Um, so that is what cooperative purchasing is and how it could help the city. Um, in this case, um, the benefits of use. Is reduce project time. Um, so we don't have to go through a formal bid process if we use Sourcewell. Um, which was used for recent fleet purchases. That was approved by council, I believe, last month, and also the Great Barber Play Structure after the Woolsey Fire. Um, what that does is if we would utilize Sourcewell, we can partner with Little Tykes. Um, who partners exclusively with Unlimited Play, um, which is a, a nonprofit. Uh, organization that helps to plan, design and build fully accessible playgrounds. Um, and with that partnership with Unlimited Play, they would assist the city with public outreach, community engagement and fundraising. The alternative option to not utilizing Sourcewell would extend the project time estimated to be about six or eight months because we would have to distribute requests for proposals, one for design and one for construction. And then if we wanted to conduct public engagement, procurement of a consultant, which is estimated to about 180 to 200,000 dollars. The cost, so most of these are fixed costs, which would be the site work for the tots and the older kids, the fencing, the security needed to install the poor in place surface, and then the poor in place surfacing cost. So those are fixed costs for all of these scenarios. The only thing that changes is the cost of the equipment itself and the installation of set equipment. And like I had mentioned, the budgeted amount for this project at this time is about 1.1 million. Not included in the cost above, there's $100,000 approved capital improvement project for perimeter fencing and new sign. And we would come back to council at a future date to award a contractor for those projects, although they would be done simultaneously with the playground upgrade. So the funding sources for this project is the State of California Prop 68 Annual Allocation, which we received, that we requested to do the poor in place surfacing at 192,743 dollars. And then approved ARPA funds for CIP projects, 800,000 for the playground, 100,000 for the fencing and sign, and 50,000 for fitness equipment across a couple of years. We also have 125,000 for the Gates Canyon Maintenance Fund that was allocated when the Brandon's Village Playground was first built years ago. So we have that fund as well. And then fundraising by Brandon's Buddies and Unlimited Play if council chooses to go that route. Whether that be, I put an estimated amount here, but that would be any amount that they could raise if we go that route. So council action. What we're looking for is direction to staff on the use of Sourcewell, on the preferred project option, approving funding sources, and if Sourcewell is, if council directs us to use Sourcewell to approve the agreement with Little Tykes and the MOU with Unlimited Play, and then obviously authorize the city manager to execute any agreement amendments within his authority. So at this time, I will open it up. That completes the presentation for Gates Canyon if there's any questions.
I'm gonna go to the public, Mari. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, I do not see any hands up, so I don't believe anyone wishes to speak on this item.
Okay. If you are watching or listening and you wish to speak, you need to raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. And what is it if they're on the phone, Mari?
Start nine, start six, and start nine to unmute.
Okay, or thank you for that. All right. In the meantime, we'll go around the horn for any council questions. Please raise your hand. All right, Councilmember Buzogin?
Um, this request has a number of unusual features that we don't normally see, Matthew, regarding kind of running a little bit counter to the competitive bidding process and all that. Have you looked at all this and is all, is this, are these all legitimate choices that we can make without anybody challenging it?
In short, yes. The Sourcewell process has been used in a number of other California entities and is a viable process. Obviously, we're not at the reviewing individual contract stage, and we will review them if the council moves forward. But yes, as a big picture approach, it's a viable option and can be done.
And do you have any like experience, like maybe staff would know better, like other councils that are presented with this choice? Is there an overwhelming preference one way or the other? To go the normal route of this or to use Sourcewell or something like that, which is almost like a non-competitive? Thing? What do most other cities do?
Well, to utilize Sourcewell, so they do the RFP process for you, basically, is what the organization does. So we're kind of going on agreements that Sourcewell has already vetted these folks to be competitive bidders, and we can utilize them through a contract. So we're not circumventing that in any way. It's definitely a viable option that we could use. I've used Sourcewell many times in other agencies that I've worked for. It's helpful with, like I said, the timeframe. If we want to get something done in a more efficient, timely manner, than Sourcewell or any other agency such as Sourcewell is common with agencies.
Okay.
You know what?
I agree with that.
Can I jump in? I'm sorry, I don't understand this. Is Sourcewell, do they make a percentage of a profit off of off of this process?
No, they're just the organization who gets the contracts and the vendors together so that municipalities and the other organizations can utilize groups and minimize the contracting or the RFP process.
Well, if I'm the only, if I'm the only one that still doesn't understand it, I'll wait and hear the rest of the questions because this is really different from what I'm familiar with. But go ahead, Mayor Pretend Shapiro.
Thank you. Quick question. Were any of these three Little Tykes, Unlimited Play, or Sourcewell the groups that presented to us last time?
Yes, those are the same groups.
Same groups, okay. And Little Tykes and Unlimited Play, how did they make? I presume they make money on the project or projects, correct?
Right, so the MOU with Unlimited Play is $10,000 to do the fundraising and the outreach. And then obviously Little Tykes, it's purchasing of the equipment, et cetera.
Okay, and your recommendation, if I didn't necessarily hear one, I don't think.
Right. My recommendation is to utilize Sourcewell and approve the agreement to utilize Little Tykes and the MOU with Unlimited Play so we can start the process of building Brandon's Village and replacing that playground equipment.
Okay, and that's it. That's all I have for questions now. That's where we are.
Councilmember Crowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to join you in saying that I'm not 100% sure I understand this process. Sourcewell has got to make money somehow. I don't know whether they get a percentage of what they're doing, if they charge a fee for people to participate in their competitive bidding process. Is there any more clarity you can give us on how that works?
That could, that could be the case. I don't think it's pushed down to the agencies that utilize these companies. The companies may pay a fee to be vetted through Sourcewell, but I don't know that for sure. I would have to look into that. Matt, can you?
You know, that's also not one I know. Obviously, Sourcewell is not doing this for free. So nothing exists for free. It is a program, I believe, tied to the Minnesota State Government. So it may be taxpayer funded, but certainly I would expect they're looking to secure a fee from someone somehow, but we can sort out what that looks like and provide more information to council.
I would appreciate that because it's hard for me to recommend. I mean, this project, I think we can get to the point where we make a decision on moving forward tonight and funding, but you know, the request was that we approve going through Sourcewell, and I don't think enough information has been presented tonight for me to make that decision. And I would have to say in a similar fashion, I appreciate the MOU with Little Tykes. Didn't know if that has to be competitively put out there as well. I'm sorry, the MOU with Unlimited Play. They're a nonprofit organization, so I don't know how that works. Again, I just need some more information before we could respond to these things.
Excuse me, Erica, is Greg Sipoll, is he with Sourcewell?
Yes. No, he's not with Sourcewell. He's with Little Tykes.
He's raising his hand.
Okay. And I'm fine to bring him in, but I think what, if we could accomplish something tonight, there's an assumption that we know what you're talking about, or me, I know, I don't know what you're talking about. So if you could walk slowly through the Sourcewell process, and I don't know if you can do it, or is there a Sourcewell person here?
So I think that's what Greg wants to speak on.
Yes. Okay, so is he with Sourcewell though?
He's not. He's with Little Tykes.
Okay.
And it may be the case, Mayor Council, that tonight, direction could be provided regarding funding, and then as Councilmember Crowe noted, come back with more information regarding Sourcewell, including a rep, if they're not here tonight.
Right, and if I could just mention that, that it was confirmed that vendors do pay to join Sourcewell.
That, can you repeat that?
That vendors pay to join Sourcewell. Hi, Greg.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, just sitting here listening, I can try to clarify a little bit of how the Sourcewell process works and what they are. First of all, Sourcewell is a nonprofit organization. They, as Erica said, they basically solicit the competitive bid process on their members' behalf. A member can be anybody from a city to a school district to a nonprofit organization. It doesn't cost anything for a member to join Sourcewell. They're a little different than a, than some of the other cooperative purchasing contracts that are out there in the sense that they aren't privately owned. They're a nonprofit, they're publicly owned. As Matthew mentioned, they originated through the state of Minnesota. Their Sourcewell staff are all government employees. They're governed by elected municipal officials.
Wait, I'm sorry, you're talking so fast. Did you say they are all government employees?
Right, right. So Sourcewell is a
Agency.
Right. Sourcewell is a nonprofit organization. It's staffed by government employees who are governed by a board that are elected municipal officials. If that kind of makes a little more clarity as to how they work. I think typically, they're funded by, they probably hold 300 contracts or more for all sorts of different kinds of products that a municipality might purchase, playgrounds and play equipment and park equipment is just one contract of all of those. We, as a manufacturer and as an approved vendor, through Sourcewell, pay them a fee when when we sell a project through a, you know, through the association. So there's no additional cost to the city. There's no cost to join Sourcewell. Sourcewell is funded, as far as I know, solely through those fees that we pay as a manufacturer.
So how do we know we're getting the best product rather than a, just a member of Sourcewell?
Right, and I think the question one A to that is how do you know that you're getting competitive pricing? Right, that's, I think, the other concern that typically a member would always come into this wanting to understand. And in our experience, as a, becoming vetted as a Sourcewell vendor is a, is a completely, you're basically acting as, you're soliciting a competitive bid process through them. You're qualified on quality, on product performance, you're qualified on a number of manufacturing standards, and you're qualified by agreeing to competitive pricing.
So can I interrupt you again? So would Sourcewell have three playground manufacturers compete for the bid?
They typically have, I think they probably have three or four.
Okay.
So, you know, they would consider an approved vendor that goes through the vetting process that typically a bid process would mimic. And so there are all sorts of stipulations and limitations on things like price increases and and, you know, so their intent as a nonprofit representative of municipalities is to ensure that that their members are getting fair, quality pricing for fair quality product.
Is there a similar organization in California? Why do we go to Minnesota for this?
So Sourcewell is a national organization. It originated originally in Minnesota, but it's now a national organization. Cities all over the country use it. City of Los Angeles purchases all of their parks and playground equipment based on the Sourcewell contract. So it's pretty commonly used, you know, all over the place by many cities.
Anyone else? And Erica, you used it. How many times have you used it?
Sourcewell, I've used probably four or five times.
And you find it more time-efficient, cost-effective?
Yes, yes. That's what the organization is trying to help with our agencies, and it really works.
Is it, is it eliminating government jobs? It's not because it's government, right? It doesn't make sense that it's government and a nonprofit. That doesn't make sense.
I believe it's a nonprofit created by the state of Minnesota, staffed by its employees, although I haven't dived deep into it. That is correct.
There's also, if you have any questions, you can certainly contact Sourcewell directly. They have you know, they have a team that can certainly answer any particular questions from a
Okay. Questions on Sourcewell? Thank you so much for jumping in, and it helped me quite a bit.
My pleasure.
Anyone on Sourcewell, any questions on any other aspect? And Greg, I do have a question for you about your product. Do we have any sustainability guidelines when ordering this playground equipment? Are there any standards that the industry sets, Greg, that we should be aware of and that you meet?
The short answer is absolutely. There's all sorts of of requirements that, you know, talk about recyclability, sustainability of how long the equipment should last. The uniqueness of a fully inclusive playground design that we're talking about replacing one that you've had for 15 or 16 years, I believe. The equipment that goes into creating that sort of inclusive design that the Unlimited Play team finds fully compliant, fully inclusive on all levels, it makes it a little bit more unique. The type of product that would go into it.
I'm talking about green sustainability.
Okay, there are no real hard and fast standards that require certain levels of sustainability in the industry. The APIMA organization, which is the APIMA, which is the Equipment Manufacturers Association, suggests that we do the same. We recycle everywhere we can. We use recycled material where it's appropriate. But to answer your question, there's not a specific standard that everyone has to comply with.
But Little Tyke, you have standards?
Little Tyke's commercial is absolutely in that standard. We're an ISO-approved manufacturer. There's all sorts of information I won't put you to sleep with right now, but there's lots of information on that we can provide if you need.
Okay. So where are we at, Erica? What is it? What is it you, you need us to approve going to Sourcewell and then? Where is she?
I'm here.
Okay, and then Little Tykes? Or if some members of the council want more information? Where are we at?
I, you know what, I still think it's it would, in order to be fully responsible, we need some more information on Sourcewell to make that decision. They're not here. And I, I mean, no one seems to have 100% of the information. This is a highly unusual arrangement, and I don't mind approving other aspects of this. I have other comments on it, of course, later, but I don't know about going with Sourcewell without when they're not here.
Anyone else want to weigh in on that? Alicia, Peter, David?
I was trying to look at their website while we were talking, but Kendon, have you used them before?
I have not used Sourcewell, but there's other similar co-ops or purchasing groups that are not nonprofit that I've used. And again, that's the idea. In fact, for those of you who are going to the League of California Cities in a few weeks, you'll run into a few of these collective purchasing contractors at the league. They'll have several booths. So I have not used Sourcewell, but it is very common to use this.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, council member.
No, no, but Erica, you said you've used them before.
Yes, yes, for park equipment, but Kendon, we used Sourcewell for the fleet that we just, yeah.
Yeah, so the purchase of the six hybrid vehicles that we just had council approved, that was through Sourcewell. And again, that gives us a set amount. And again, that gives us a s- set amount per the vehicle for those uh, uh, six vehicles. So, um, Mayor and Council members, I think what I would recommend is if there's a request or if there's a desire from the council. We could table on this item, bring it back on the next meeting in September. Um, there really isn't anything to dissect or approve without Sourcewell, it's either Sourcewell or not. Um, and again, if we don't do Sourcewell, there, I mean, it is going to delay the time and. Uh, we'll have to go out to bid for a, a contractor to design this. Which, again, if, if that's the right thing to do, we need to do that, but if we'd like to, we can't dissect it, I guess, is what I'm saying to. Uh, at this time, so if, if we'd like to get more information on Sourcewell, we can bring that at the next meeting and table this item.
Um, it sounds like we all need a little bit more education on Sourcewell, I think that would be helpful. Um, I'd also like both for this project and Wild Walnut, information on sustainability. There's something called the B Corp, where businesses adhere to certain standards of sustainability. And they get certified in that way, I'm sure that. There's manufacturers that get that too, but I'm just curious, I mean, it. We, we, I'm gonna put on in September the procurement policy. So that when we're purchasing, it's at the front of our minds, you know, how we can be sustainable in our purchases. So that's something I'd ask for, or. Or, does it not? Do you not do that? Or can you do that, Kendon? I'm looking at you.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just saying if that's the request of the council, yes, if there's a consensus to do that, we can look into that.
Um, council, do you have interest in getting information about, um? What is it? Coal source, sole source?
Sourcewell.
Sourcewell.
Yes. Do you want that, do you want this to come back to us? Anyone and oppose that? Okay, so that, that, that's good. Um, and do you want to get information about sustain- sustainable playground equipment? Anyone oppose that?
Not sure that's necessary.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
You don't care that what we might be buying could be sustainable or is?
So I just think that I'm looking, first, I hope that staff would just bring us the best product and. You know, if that's one of the criteria, but I don't need, like.
Well, then do we need to give them direction to have sustainable?
I don't even know what sustainable playground equipment is.
Either do I, but I, everything comes made differently now with these kinds of, some manufacturers anyway, looking at the chemicals. Looking at the paint, looking at waste.
Maybe the Sourcewell people can tell us what they do if they have that ability to, to vet that. I, I don't, I don't know, we don't know enough about it.
I think that's fine, so if you could ask them. How they identify sustainable playgrounds, that'd be great, that'd be happy, so there's no extra work for staff. Anything else on this item, Erica?
No, I think.
You have enough direction? Okay, Greg, thank you for coming. All right, our third park is Wild Walnut. Erica.
Um, okay, Wild Walnut, so we are looking at Wild Walnut for the construction of a permanent dog park, playground equipment and parking lot. So the background on this. It started from twenty nineteen, from when city council approved the Wild Walnut master plan. Um, in June of twenty twenty, city council rejected all bids related to the project and gave direction to install a temporary dog park. Um, and value engineer, I know we don't like that term. Um, which basically is looking at ways to save on costs without uh losing amenities or the integrity of the project. Um, so it was requested that we value new, value engineer the plans and determine other funding sources for the park. Um, the temporary dog park was opened in September of twenty twenty, uh with other funding sources um being sought. In October twenty twenty through present, um, staff has worked with the landscape architect to uh value engineer the project and revise the plans. Um, an ADA accessible parking space was added. And uh staff reapplied for grant funding from RP OSD. So in the original um funding sources, uh, the department had applied for measure A funds for a hundred and eighty seven thousand. Um, unfortunately, uh, that wasn't followed through on prior to my arrival, uh, so that grant was not uh. Uh, allocated to the city of Calabasas, so I have reapplied for um the same grant. Um, an update to the Parks Recreation Education Commission was given in July of twenty two, just to update them. On where we were at the status of Wild Walnut. Um, this is the original plan, um, I know it's a little hard to see there. Um, with the small and large dog areas. Uh, this is the proposed uh playground area. This is the large tree canopy with a switchback, ADA switchback uh heading to the playground area. So in looking um and trying to find some cost savings, um. The landscape architects, I'm gonna skip this page and go to the new one, um. Came up with this plan. So, um, the ADA parking stall is here, the playground equipment, which was originally here with the switchback going this way. Was moved down closer to uh Mulholland Highway. And that was due to the, the lack of need to um. Grade as much as if we put the playground up here. So with the Mulholland Highway project, the Public Works Department um is including some of this grading and sidewalk area. Uh, to um for the park at Wild Walnut. So with that, some of these amenities uh moved to locations, um. Whereas the, the restroom and such was over here in the previous original plan, it's all been moved closer to the play equipment. Um, and then I will go back up to, let me go back. Um, with that, here's some of the original amenities that um was approved for a Wild Walnut. Um, and looking at that, uh, staff came up with some, some vary, uh, variations to this play equipment. Um, which would have to be vetted obviously through public engagement, um, but something more along these lines. Um, and again, we would get public input on that. Uh, with the re- reapplication of the uh grant for RP OSD, we have to do another workshop to get public input. So if this was something that council uh felt we can move towards, we would get public input on uh the playground equipment. Um, and other amenities as well. Um, so the modifications that were made uh for the cost uh to reduce costs was the relocation of the play equipment. Um, the relocation of dog park entry gates, which match up now with the ADA uh parking stall. Relocation of the portable restrooms and water fountains and benches to be um closer to the playground. And then adjustment of the parking lot entry driveway to accommodate for ADA parking. Um, so those are some of the modifications that were made uh for cost savings. Um, again, here's the original plan, I put these in here twice, so we can go back and forth if council needs to uh, wants to see the difference on these. Um, and then finally, let's see, we have the funding sources, um. So like I said, we had the regional park and open space district measure A grant application was, was put in for a hundred and eighty seven thousand. Which uh was not followed through on, so now we are, uh, the, the good thing with that is now I'm applying for two hundred and ninety five thousand. Um, for, from the measure A um grants. Um, the ARPA funds, uh, eight hundred thousand was um approved, the CIP. Uh, but that was spread over three years, um, if it's council's direction to complete the park in, in one phase. We can allocate those ones to uh this year. Um, and here I put construction can be done in phases relative to funding above or allocated for one time um completion. Um, the phasing that was placed was the parking lot, permanent dog park and then playground area. But again, that's at the council's discretion. Um. Next steps would be that we had to conduct a public workshop for the grant application, um, which I could do uh next month, we can handle that. Uh, go back to the pre with the results of those, um, with the workshop and work with them on the um. Design changes, um, prepare a request for proposals for the construction of the park. And then award the contract uh once that's done. So the council action we are asking for is to approve the next steps and uh funding sources at this time.
Okay. Madam Clerk, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a Rosa Vessar. Followed by Ed Albert.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, council members and mayor. And it is so late that my puppy has gone to bed without me and is sleeping on my bed and no doubt my pillow. So um I will move this along as I encourage you to move this along, um. We've been through the workshops, we've been through this before, please, let's get this going. Um, I'm concerned about the new plan, trying to cut costs. Um, I haven't heard about that on the other parks. But to expedite, I would say let's just go for it and um get this moving along. I would like to see it done in one swoop. Um, I know that the construction for the highway is ongoing now. And I'd like to have. Things expedited by moving along, I know we talked about phasing in. Uh, as a way to ease some of the costs. But I would like to see us moving quicker on this, it has been years and years, as you know. And um, that's what I urge you to do, the community awaits this project. Wow, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Ed Albert. Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, uh, I'm gonna try to use my three minutes as a organization on behalf of the Greater Mulwood homeowners. But I'm gonna speed it up and I'll make it quick, so I don't expect to use that much. Um, you know, it's no secret, we tried to do with Greater Mulwood for many years, we've had surveys on our website for years. We've been advocate for this park, um, Wal- Wild Walnut in, in all of our opinion is a jewel site. Um, and it uh deserves the attention uh as a jewel site would. Uh, the community, uh, when we did our survey and what we were hoping to see would be uh a design. Of equipment that would fit the natural landscape and appearance of the surrounding environment. Um, a variety of modern equipment accommodating uh different age groups. From young to toddler to a little older. Shade issues, which I see on the uh tonight uh diagram, that's been taken into consideration. Uh, and also safety factors, the location of the equipment, um, we're concerned about uh at one time, uh. With uh old Topanga and traffic issues. But now I noticed that the play, the children's play area is very close uh to the parking lot, which is very close to Mulholland. And speeding traffic on a green light after that uh light is in is gonna be a potential problem for someone who's trying to answer their phone. Or blowing their nose, um, I would really uh feel very uncomfortable having children that close to the highway. Um, so that brings us to the present, um. I have been patiently waiting as many to have this done, uh, I know Rosa wanted to have this done quickly. But just to get it done for the sake of getting it done is not really a good answer, I would like to see it go back to pre. Uh, it's never been to pre, uh, in this sense, they've never had a chance to vet the equipment. Um, I think that would be a great help for the council to have them go over it, if it takes more than one meeting. Uh, in great detail, so when this finally comes back to the council, it can save council a lot of time and have a lot of questions answered. Um, so in conclusion, uh, please press the pause button, send it back to pre. And I hope we can get it back up to council as soon as possible, we've waited ten years, we can wait ten years and three months. Thank you for your attention. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Ariana Rudgee.
Hi there, can everyone hear me? Well, thank you so much, I know it's been a long meeting and I appreciate everyone's time. Um, you know, I just, I'm new to the area, I have a eighteen month old and a three and a half year old. We were really excited to come over here because we, I grew up in Westlake. Um, and I have to admit, I'm really disappointed in the parks um that we have to offer for our young kids. There are essentially no options over here, I mean, we have Calabasas Clubhouse, which is a preschool all day. And then now looking at these plans. You know, I was really excited about it, but as a mom, I'm terrified about my kid's playground next to Mulholland. It just doesn't seem right, um. So I really wish that, you know, I know you guys are getting the ball rolling and everyone's working really hard and there's a lot of factors to bring into play. But, you know, we need parks, we need kids to have places to go. And it's just, it's really hard to see this kind of plan, and I'm just like, this isn't what we need. This is not what the young parents want, bring their kids to a highway. Um, we're in Calabasas, there's so much greenery, so I think there can be a better way to position this park. Um, and I know this was taken off the agenda, and I just wanna advocate, you know, I know we're not talking about Freedom Park, but. I'm really frustrated, there's no parks over here, and I think this should be at the forefront, maybe before we talk about Dianza. Because there are parks over there, there are facilities that people are able to use, and we don't have anything over here. Um, and that's really a disservice to our young little kids, um, who need places to go and things to do. And it's now, you know, pretty and fall's coming, and it's just like, where do we go? Um, so I hope we can really re-prioritize and think about our young little kids. Obviously, I think about them all the time because I'm just, that's what I live, but um, I just. I know it's an, it's something our community is lacking, so I hope we can kind of work on that, thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, all right, I'm gonna turn to council for questions, um, initially to staff. Does anyone have any questions they'd like? Okay, Councilmember Buzagin.
Um, a couple of speakers discussed one of the issues that I, I noticed. Have we, when we moved things around in the configuration, how do we factor in public safety, especially with the children?
Erica, do you want me to do that one? And, and I know that we have, um, I did see Robert earlier, but uh, I'll try to present what I talked with him about, so. Um, uh, maybe Erica, while I'm talking, if you can bring up the map of the new design. So, there's.
And Robert is in, you want us to bring him in?
Yeah, and, and then he can tell me if I, I remember well enough to, what he taught me, so.
I'll bring him in.
Um, so looking at this design, so part of, again, the Mulholland project is adding sidewalks, so there is going to be a sidewalk along Mulholland. Um, adjacent, so between the sidewalk and the street, there's a guard rail. So there will be a guard rail all the way along, um, that's up further, um, Erica, so on the other side of the. Yeah, the guard rail uh along the highway sidewalk, and then a buffer of about another five feet to the fence of the playground area. Uh, again, um, it, it's, it's on the highway, but again, about, I think, Robert, you mentioned maybe a, a fifteen to twenty feet. A separation from Mulholland to the play area, is that correct?
You remember very well, good evening, council member. First of all, we're gonna install guard rail, those guardrails are not only for the safety of the park, safety of driveway and curb that we have in that area. Also, this sidewalk will end up into the playground and the parking lot. Is not gonna go to the signal to next. And also, we were planning to install a lot of trees between sidewalk and the highway. And we can have buffer area between sidewalk and the playground, not only for the safety, for the privacy. And giving more security for the playground.
Robert, where's the dog park right now? Can you show us on the map?
The darker. Area, it's all dog park, the smaller areas are for small dog, the bigger area is a big dog, almost. The same as we have right now, just gonna be modified.
So, are, so, I don't know who, what. I don't know if it's a public works issue or if it's a consultant issue or what it is. But who looks at that with the idea of this is standardly in the industry? What we do to maximize the protection of public safety? Or is it JPIA? Has JPIA looked at this? They might have somebody.
Well, this is typical public work design and engineers and safety. Well, this is typical public work design and engineers and safety. And that's why we need roadway safety with the guardrails. This plan does not show the guardrail. The guardrail will extend all the way close to signal to protect the cars that, as it was mentioned, in case they lose control based on really driver behavior, not based on the highway design. So the guardrail is a first safety factor. Then, as Kindan mentioned, we purposely push the sidewalk in. And the longest distance is about twenty seven feet. And the shorter distance is about twenty feet to the guardrail, not even travel.
And Robert, I have the utmost confidence in you, and I'm not questioning any of your judgment here. The only thing I would, because I don't know, I'm just asking an open-ended question. Is this normally the purview of Public Works, or does the JPIA come out and assess risk assessment? And the reason I ask is, this is a really unique park. That is a very, in my opinion, unideal place to have a park. And I mean, we have it, nothing we can do about it, but that highway, cars speed through, I know there's gonna be a light, but there's some blind curves. It's just very, it's very challenging, particularly because we're gonna have kids crossing the street. We're gonna have people walking to the park, we're gonna have pets. I just, I'm just wondering, do we have Kindan? Is it typical that we have someone come out and look at the safety features or not? I mean, it could just be the Public Works does it, and that, and I'm satisfied if that's what your answer is.
I can contact JPIA, they do have a risk management engineering, and we send them this drawing. Again, the drawings that civil engineer did and we reviewed it was sent to the landscape architect. So we coordinate this design with Erica. So entire parking lot will be built to measure M project and the sidewalk. And while we are doing that, we will do our best to do some minor grading or additional grading, and it will be slope up. And lastly, we are trying to locate the sewer manhole and water line so we can have a permanent facility in that area.
I'm fine with all that, Robert, you're doing a fine job. My only question is, are we getting somebody to look at this unique configuration of the, of the public safety aspect of it? Just to make sure that we're not changing it and making it a more dangerous situation?
I haven't done that, but I'll be more than happy to put it on the list of things to do, and we will call JPIA.
That's all I want. If they're okay with it, then I don't need to even see it again.
Sounds good, we will take care of it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call on Peter Kraut, but I have serious concerns about that location too. Councilmember Kraut.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, a couple of thoughts, a couple of questions to start with. The, the project that came in over budget, what was, what, what did it come in at?
Councilman, I can do that, let me get my notes here. So originally, the city had estimated, the engineer's estimate was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When the bids came in, the lowest bid was just about five eighty, five ninety, but that bid was rejected because the packet wasn't complete. So therefore, the next lowest bid was about, about six fifty. So about two hundred thousand dollars over the engineer's estimate. A little more context to that, so this was being discussed in June twenty twenty. The pandemic was, you know, just starting, and we, cities across the country were very uncertain about budgets. And there was rightfully so, a hesitancy of approving additional two hundred thousand from general fund to bridge that gap. Where we're at now, though, in today's world, to get what we're looking at is a million dollar project. So, and that's even, again, having Public Works do some of the grading, as we mentioned, the sidewalk and some of the other work on there. So we're looking at a million dollar project, just in a, you know, it's, it's, it's gone up forty percent and fifty percent in just a couple of years.
So are you saying that the original plan would price out at a million dollars right now, or the revised plan?
The revised plan is gonna probably cost out at a million. The original, I don't know what that would go for.
Well, if it was six fifty before and it's gone up by forty percent, then the original plan should be a million dollars within reach of what's proposed today.
So I, I think, Councilman, I apologize, I think I'm off with my percentages there, that we're, that what we've allocated, this million dollars is what we think the bids will come in at, with the revisions, with the changes.
All right, and with the, the grant, we have to do public outreach, right? So with that, we could ask questions about, you know, the location of the, the, the playground equipment and stuff like that, along with what type of playground equipment?
Correct.
Include all of that in our, in our outreach?
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. I'll hold my comments till after my colleagues are done.
Councilmember Whitechamp.
Councilmember, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that there were so many people who wanted to speak on this item. But because of the time, people have dropped off, and I know that they were, they had called in specifically for this item.
Do you have any questions?
No, I just think that, like, it's almost eleven o'clock, we still have consent and another item. I just wanna make sure we're making the best decisions at this hour. And I just don't think it's fair for people who wanted to participate.
Yeah, we're gonna have a workshop on this too, so I know it's late. But do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So the first workshop, I went to a workshop on this project in like two thousand fourteen. It's like, either this project is gonna happen, or it's not. But like, we built the senior center in less time, like this, this just cannot be going in circles. And like, having workshops going back to the pre, like, I understand what, I respect what Ed was saying about making this a great project, but it might never got, get built. And I spoke about this with staff earlier. Like, we have to figure out a way to get this project developed, or else we should just acknowledge that it might just not happen. But we have, like, we're breaking, we just continue to look at plans, pass them back, and this and that. And I'll never forget people calling in saying that their kids have aged out, their grandkids have aged out. I mean, it's just not fair that there is no park space on this side of town, and it just shouldn't be that difficult to get a park built.
Any questions, anything?
No, I asked all my questions, but I'm just, like, if we're gonna continue to send it back, it's just not gonna happen.
So can you, I'll take a couple of questions. Can you put up the drawing again? I have, here are my concerns about the location. It's such a beautiful piece of property, and we've got the playground adjacent to Mulholland Highway. And if you're familiar with the weekends on Mulholland Highway, it is a motorcycle. It's, it's crazy, race cars and motorcycles. And balls, I can see balls going out to the road. I just, I, I'm not sure why that happens. So anyway, my question is, I don't wanna be. The dog spot is nice and flat right there. Can we switch out these two areas? I know ADA compliance, they need to have access, so we need to be near the parking lot. But look at that, that beautiful location, and just expand it for the dogs over here. The dogs won't be bothered by the motorcycle noises. Is that an option? Did you guys look at that?
We did not. We just looked at ways to be more cost-effective. We can definitely look at that. Absolutely. That's just going back to, we have to get to the landscape architect to make those design changes, which would then trigger additional workshops. I know we'll be doing it for the grant, so we could probably do that simultaneously.
Yeah, I was hoping that we would just need one more workshop to. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but there's nothing that would make me feel comfortable. Not only with, with the speeding race cars and the motorcycles, but the fact that balls could be kicked over. Could they be, Robert? It looks so close.
It does looks close, but definitely gonna have some kind of fencing, especially as a young children playground. So it will have those four feet fencing. But the idea of looking at the dog park and switching it around, we were talking, and Kindan brought it up. And we had a quick look at it, and it's definitely doable, as Erica mentioned. We can expedite it prior to a workshop, help her out. We have all the drawings, we have all the topo maps. We may be able to do that quickly and take it to the workshop and pre while Erica is trying to do that for her grants.
I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. James, I'll start with, is David still, David hasn't commented.
Oh, David, I have questions, I'll defer.
David, do you have any questions?
I have more comments than questions.
Okay.
All right, well, let me, and then let me just comment. I mean, I, I'm a little bit frustrated because this is actually, it doesn't go back to twenty fourteen. This project goes back in its earliest rendition in two thousand three. Nineteen years ago, we cut the ribbon on the park. There, almost everybody who was at that ceremony and on our staff is gone. I mean, some are really gone, like dead. And basically, this project has outlived a good portion of the city. I, I think it's very sad. I, I'm not even, I haven't even been in favor of a lot of things that have happened at this park. I, I mean, but the public has spoken, and now that the public's spoken, I think it's really time to start implementing. I, I don't mind looking at this and, and, you know, tweaking it a little bit, but I don't wanna do anything that's gonna delay it another year or two, because it's just, it, it's not appropriate. It, it really is a shame. I, I know of no other project in the city that has taken this long, that's a city project, like a public project. And I don't even know where to start. We have taken cumulatively dozens of surveys of different types. And each time, we, we discard the previous one, and then we wait, sit on the new survey, and then we go, and then we get a new one. And we sit on the old survey and we get a new one. It just, it, it's time now to implement. So I wanna make some decisions tonight, and if it's too late to make a reasonable decision, then we put it over a couple of weeks. Someone mentioned that it's getting very late and we may not be making the best decision. So I'm amenable to that if the council wants to do it, but I, I don't wanna do anything we-
I don't wanna hold it over if we don't have to. Mayor Protam Shapiro?
Thank you. I'll just echo both Alicia and James's sentiments. I think it was two thousand fifteen, two thousand three, we cut the ribbon, and it was then designed to be a passive park, the only real one in Calabasas. And it was beautiful, it served a purpose. Two thousand fifteen, we had four-legged and two-legged people cheering us as we approved, if I recall, this park. And, and we, I guess I wanna know, and these are the questions, what will we need to do to get this done? Get the park done and running? How much? And what would the timeline be? So I am agreeing with both Alicia and James, it's time to get it done. I think there's thoughtful comments about switching the location of the playground for children and the dog areas for safety purposes, whatever is the safest, best way to do it. Let's do it, let's get it done and move forward. We have a lot of other work to do. And this isn't the big park for the east side of Calabasas that we hear people complaining about. We have to come up with some other solutions, but for this, let's get it done, let's do it properly. If it takes putting it over two weeks, great.
Kindan, Erica, can you can respond to how quickly? It sounds like we were mandated to do a grant workshop. We can do it at a pre-meeting, correct?
No, the, the public outreach can't be done, so those would be two separate meetings, the pre-meeting and then-
Okay.
Yeah.
But you see it happening in September?
Correct.
Could you, as an alternate to, at the workshop, could you flip the playground to where the dog park is and expand the dog park in the, where the playground? And I don't know if my colleagues support that or not, but without holding things up for September, could you have this alternate view?
Yeah, we'd have to work with the landscape architect and have him look at the topography, and even if that's doable. But yes, we can, we can do that, we can work with him.
And my colleagues, is there any opposition to getting that alternate view in time for the mandated workshop?
But then, what, what happens with it? It goes to the workshop, then it comes back here?
It goes to the pre and, and the workshop with a recommendation, and then we finalize it.
And when would that be, Ken, and then we finalize it?
Kindan or Erica?
Yeah, so what I would see is then, so if, if Eric is able to do that, and so it, the big question is the, the landscape design. It's not scheduling the workshop. If we can get them new or revised landscape design and have that ready for September, we would come back in October. And that meeting would be then a request to go out to bids. I mean, that's, I think that's where we're at, is go out to bids in October.
Can we make this park our priority over the other two that we spoke about tonight? So that it, it moves on its course quickly?
And to, instead of Dianza and-
Well, no, I mean, they're all important, but this one, because of its history, can we prioritize it? If its staff has capacity issues to moving this along?
I think we would, we would be fine. I think we can do them all concurrently, but yes, this is a priority. So, but that kind of lies on, on the landscape architect and getting those done. But yes, I can, I can put that at the forefront for him to do that.
So I leave it to my colleagues if, if we move forward that way.
I just have a question, is that area the same size for the dog park?
That's something we'd have to look at, at the actual topography, and if, if it's, if we're able to do that, we, and how far back we can go. Oh, I'm looking at this like I'm sharing the screen. So we would, we'll definitely talk to the, the landscape architect and ensure they still have the same amount of dog space. We don't wanna reduce that at all, so.
Right. Anyone else, any comments?
Only comment I was, Madam Mayor, was gonna make was, as far as the funding goes, I am supportive of that as well. I guess we'll be doing that after it comes back to us.
And, and Mayor Protam, can I build on that, because that's one of the things I wanted to address is, again, as it was put into the CIP, we had phased this out over three years. I think what I would like to recommend to council, I should say, is if the council's amenable to this, is that we have a motion to have this done in one phase and not phase it over a three-year project. And that way, when we go to the pre and when we go to the community, we're saying it's a, it's one phase instead of three phases.
I think that's great.
I would make that motion.
Oh my gosh, I hope Rosa's listening. Oh, Kindan, that's great. Is there any, anyone opposed to that? Doesn't look like it. So, does it sound like you have enough direction, Kindan?
We did have a motion from Mayor Protam, because it is actually budgeted in the CIP. So if we could have a motion to direct staff to revise the CIP and instead of phasing it, come back in, in a single project.
I'll make the motion.
Well, you had a motion by the Mayor Protam.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call, please.
Councilmember Bissagian.
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitechuck.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Shapiro.
Yes.
Mayor Mar.
Yes, and I think that's fantastic to, to move the phases together, that, that's great. I think ultimately, this is going to be the flagship park in the city, so I'm excited even though it's taken forever. Okay, so we're just gonna quickly go through consent items.
Mayor, excuse me?
Or is there anyone-
The public hearing is still open, and you had a hand up still. Oh, I just put it down. Sorry.
It wasn't a public hearing, Councilmember Kraut, and the public, the person already spoke.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I missed what you said, but I'll keep moving forward. We have consent items one through four. Does anyone wanna take any of these off?
One through five, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mari, one through five. Is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve consent items one through five.
And the second?
I'll second that.
We'll call, please.
Councilmember Bissagian.
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitechuck.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Shapiro.
Yes.
Mayor Mar.
Yes.
Carrie Spicer.
All right, we're on item number six. This is Continued Business Comparison of Pards versus Calpers IRS Code Section 115 Trust. And Ron, would you like to make- Um, and Ron, would you like to make a short presentation or?
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
So this is a continuation item. We, back in May and June, we heard and had presentations by pars. And by calpers regarding their section one fifteen trust that they offer for both uh pension liabilities and OPEB liabilities. OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits. It's to fund our retiree medical liabilities into the future. Staff is, uh, staff has invited both calpers and pars to be available tonight. So they are representatives uh out in the audience that can uh speak to this. Should council have any direct questions for you? Uh, for them. Uh, you have in front of you the report, uh, uh, comparison between what uh calpers and pars staff is recommending. That we would go with the pars option at, at this point, that we would allocate two and a quarter million dollars to fund. Uh, our pension and our OPEB, partially fund our pension and our OPEB liabilities. And staff recommendation to uh grant the city manager um the ability to sign all the contracts and agreements and so forth to. Effectuate that. Um, and one uh last thing, uh, I did not en- include. Depending on what choice gets uh made tonight, we will have to come back um with at least the trust document. For either pars or calpers for the council to approve. So that'll be on a, a future consent item uh for the council. But I'm available to answer any questions that council may have regarding this.
Okay, um, are there any questions?
Madam Mayor, we have a public comment.
Yes, thank you. Public comment, please, Mari.
Brian Cameron?
Okay, I should be unmuted.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Mauer and City Council members. Um, I do have a couple of comments. In the third bullet under discussion and analysis, staff writes, quote, assets can earn a much higher rate of return versus cities' investment policy. That, that implies to me that the city is maintaining a fairly conservative investment of their current assets, which is a good thing. And oh, by the way, overall, I fully support this plan. Uh, to set aside funds in advance of uh pre-fund, actually catching up on your uh unfunded liabilities. Now, I understand the city's investment policy to choose with low risks. Which would be consistent. Moving money to either calpers or pars is a good idea. The consequence to be the program, however, is that investing the funds in equities exposes those funds to losses. That the current investment policy probably avoids. I'm not saying this change is necessarily bad, but just that the council needs to be prepared to accept more uncertainty and the possibility of loss of capital. Second point, the last sentence of the discussion analysis section reads, staff believes it is prudent and wise to invest the. Two and a quarter million dollars in future contributions with pars in order to diversify who manages the city's assets. Differences, uh, thirty-five basis points. Uh, in the first year, you're talking about additional expenses going with pars. Uh, five thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Assuming you continue to fund this program, that becomes. Uh, initial fund of eleven thousand two fifty. After two years, by year five, you're paying twenty-eight thousand one twenty-five more in fees. With pars than you would with calpers. Uh, and my third point is, in comparing calpers to pars regarding investment returns, uh, the report says calpers. Quote, range of expected returns is four percent to seven point six percent. For pars, the report reads, range of ten-year actual returns is three point eight percent to nine point two percent. I read these statements as calpers is making a forward projection of anticipated returns. While pars is a retrospective measure of actual returns. Either measure has value to the decision maker, but unless I'm missing something. A head-to-head comparison between these two numbers is of little value. So in short. I think the, I suggest the council ask itself two questions. One, what level of investment risk? Are we willing to take with these excess funds? And two, what is an accurate measure of the two funds' performances? And is the cost differential worth it? And that's what I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Ron, do you want to respond to the, the question about investing in equities and the risk there? Where are we at with that high risk, medium, low?
Yes, Madam, Madam Mayor, so Mr. Cameron is correct. Uh, the funds would be invested in equities and in bonds, which are. Uh, more risky than what our current investment policy has for all of our idle funds. And that's the reason for choosing the section one fifteen trust. We would be matching our long-term liabilities of funding pension. And funding our retiree medical, which are really long-term liabilities, with a long-term asset. In equities and bonds. So we're matching the time period of it. And it would be my recommendation that we actually never touch these monies, that we invest in these equities. It offsets our liabilities, our unfunded for both the retiree medical and the pers. And they stay there in perpetuity as an, as an offset for these long-term uh liabilities and it grows. If we never take the, if we never take the money out, it doesn't matter what returns there are from year to year to year. We are going to average a long-term market return, which will be far superior. Than what our current investment policy uh returns or, or allows, uh, by the way. Um, in regard to the um. Ma- uh, matching of the pers and the pars on the investment returns. Calpers's um investments are, are, are a projection because they've been so short-term in this, uh, in this environment. Their pension one fifteen trust, I believe, is less than five years old. And their OPEB one is probably about thirteen, maybe fourteen years old at this point, maybe a little bit longer. If my memory is uh correct, versus pars is, is uh, is longer than that. Um, so I, I gave that as a prospective return, just because they've been such a shorter amount of time now, uh, in their investment horizon. For, for these two types of funds that they, that they offer. They're, they're newish to the market, if you will.
Counsel, any questions? I mean, it would seem like maybe we should hear calpers respond to this. Um, but counsel, are you comfortable moving forward with this? What would you like to do? I see um Councilmember Kraut followed by Mayor Protam Shapiro.
Um, I'm comfortable moving forward with it. I'm pretty clear on it. I do want to uh clarify a couple of things for the record. In the staff presentation, it showed that the returns for calpers would be between four and seven point six percent. But as I understand it, the investments for our pension would be between four and five percent. And the investments for OPEB would be six point two to seven point six. Those are the only fund options I saw. Is that correct, Ron?
Yeah.
So the greatest amount of money that we'd be putting away, we would only be able to get a five percent return on. So. When we're talking about putting money away for a long term, we want to be as aggressive as we can with the return prudently. As opposed to money that we need in the short term, like our general fund, we want to be very conservative, which is why the state doesn't allow us to uh. Take it to Vegas and put it on red. But I think when we're looking at the one fifteen trust here, we want to be more aggressive than the calpers funds. Have available to us. Uh, the pars funds. We can do the capital appreciation or the balance fund and get nine point two or, or seven point nine percent. Uh, projected returns there based on their historical returns. So I, I would think that. With those numbers, unless, Ron, I've misread these. I think our best option is to go with pars. And I think before we choose one. It's important that the council weigh in on what their tolerance for risk is and how aggressively they want to invest. Uh, I myself personally would advocate for a greater return, knowing that we'll be leaving the money in there for a very long time.
What is a very long time?
Ten years plus.
Ten years plus?
Or much longer.
Okay.
Much, much longer.
Mayor Protam, did you have your hand up?
I did. I thought you were asking calpers to weigh in on some of the comments.
Well, I was, but did you have a comment?
I, I do have some comments, but I certainly wait until I heard from calpers and then make them if that's appropriate.
Okay, so can you bring in calpers? I guess we're gonna ask. Calpers about. If it was, if it's accurate, their way they projected their. Their uh percentages.
That's Karen, right? Oh, yeah, there she is.
Hey, Karen.
You have to unmute yourself, Karen.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, thank you. Um, so the question about uh those projections that was mentioned earlier, yes, th- those are correct. So our open one fifteen trust, by the way, we started fifteen years ago. For the open trust, we had um the law, uh, the highest in terms of yield is at seven point five nine percent. And then the most conservative option is at six point two-two percent. But for the pension refunding trust, um, we have two options, a four percent and a five percent expected return. But I also want to make sure that these are designed that way. Because based on experience. Uh, employers accusing an open one fifteen trust truly pre-fund for a much longer period of time. They could be pre-funding like decades into the future, thirty, forty, fifty years. So there's really no um need to use the money much earlier. Therefore, they're willing to invest in. A higher yielding investment portfolio and willing to accommodate whatever the investment risk associated with that. But for the one fifteen trust, we do not offer the same investment portfolios as the, for the pension with the OPEB. Because we understand that, you know, just being calpers, we do require these um pension payments um every year. And it's going to fluctuate. So we realize that. Agencies most likely will use these pension one fifteen trust assets much earlier. I know the desire is if we can leave them much longer, ten years, twenty years, that's perfectly uh, a great approach. But if your eight-year um operating budget might not. Be enough and you would need supplement from your pension one fifteen trust. Then that is, that's where uh potential um situation could happen wherein. You aim for the highest yielding pension one fifteen trust portfolio. But then the actual time to make a withdrawal or to take money out of that trust, the market is down.
Okay.
Therefore, it's hard to, you're cementing losses if you do that. So again, by design, we opted for a very conservative pension refunding trust portfolio. So those are the investment options. And uh, one item again would be our fees. You will always start with less fees at calpers. And we con- continue to uh be charged less fees because you're a public agency like you. So no one retains the profit or commission uh at calpers.
Thank you. Um, council members, any comments?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I was just, just wanted to hear, um. I, some of those points you mentioned were, question I was gonna ask Ron to confirm. The, the fees on calpers for OPEB versus uh pars is ten base points versus sixty i- in the chart you provided us. Again, I don't have my notes from your prior presentation, which was wonderful, but so I'm just going by what we have tonight.
Yes, yeah, that's the, one of the differences is those fees on the pars side, as the assets grow. Uh, in amount, then the fees will decrease as uh we go through their different tier cost structure. But yes, calpers uh charges uh, doesn't matter uh how many millions of dollars or lack thereof that you have, they charge everybody the same set of fees.
Right, okay, thank you. And, and was the inquiry correct? I never heard or replied to that, that pars is basing theirs on actual returns for the past. Uh, a basis, a past ten years, uh, rather than forward-thinking projections.
Right, I, I went off of all, I went off the information that both calpers and pars uh provided to the council previously, just to show you the comparison between. Uh, the, the two agencies without, you know, researching and digging up a prospective. Forecasted investment return from pars.
Okay, great, thanks. And the only other comment, I don't remember it from the last presentation, but I. Uh, do see it here, calpers board. Controls the investments for calpers and pars and US Bank. Is US Bank a new, something new from the last time? That we did not know is controlling the investments on the par side also?
No, that was, that was presented when pars presented uh their plan. They partner with US Bank. So US Bank, uh, Highmark Capital specifically provides the, the investments and you wor- you work with your. Um, with your portfolio manager on what investment choices to, uh, to make and changes over time and performance reviews. And so forth, but no, pars is always partnered with US Bank.
Okay, great. And I know it's late and uh, it's not maybe sounding terribly clear, but I just want to state I'm. Probably the more, most, one of the most conservative ones on, on speaking tonight when it comes, at least as far as uh. The finances go. I, I like to generally take a more conservative view when it comes, especially when it comes to public funds and, and our city money. So I am extremely cautious when it comes to that, and that, that does affect my view. I'm gonna ask if it's possible, in my analysis anyway, that we would go for OPEB with calpers and the other uh. Trust fund one fifty with pars. If that is possible, that would be my recommendation for what is.
And how would you, there, one's a very large sum and one is, you know, two million and one's two hundred and fifty thousand. How would you split that?
Well, it's, it's already divided in the report if I read it right. Uh.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it is. But don't you mean one of those to go to pars and one of them to go to calpers?
Yes.
Okay, so which one would you?
The OPEB to go to calpers.
Okay.
And I was going on the, a, a number of reasons, one, the better returns and the uh lower costs on that one.
So the two million to pars? And the two hundred and fifty thousand to calpers is your recommendation?
That's mine. Again, I'm going based upon.
Okay.
Our CFO's recommendation and uh having spent some time on this with our task.
Anything else? Anybody? Is there a motion?
I, yeah, if I could just ask one more thing then.
Absolutely.
Ron, I, I think in order to give you direction, we need to not only pick calpers versus pars, and I, I like. Mayor Protam Shapiro's recommendation of, of putting the OPEB into calpers and putting our pension. Uh, into pars. But don't you need direction from us on which fund of those groups to put it into, whether we're doing the capital appreciation, the balance, the moderate, or, or something?
No, I was actually, um, the staff report recommends that council authorize the city manager to sign all the documents and administrative agreements. And so forth, and included in that would be the investment uh choices. Typically, uh, cities. Uh, leave those investment choices down at the, at the staff level. Um, at Moore Park, that's the way uh we did it. And I believe at Glendale, that was the same way. Of course, council can decide whichever way you, you want to, uh, but my recommendation would be to leave the investment choices. And signing of all the agreements and reviewing the performance of the investments and so forth down at the staff level. And signing of all the agreements and reviewing the performance of the investments and so forth down at the staff level.
Okay, then I would agree with the Mayor Pretend Shapiro, then I would uh, if that was a motion.
Can, can, Ron, what do you think about? I mean, do you have any last thoughts about this motion about?
My recommendation still stands, um, both pots of money to go to go with PARS. I think you add another, you just add another um account for me to keep track of. Uh, so, and I I don't have that many accounts here. I have four banking accounts, I have two investment accounts, I got CalPERS that I keep track of. So you're, you're just creating one more account, one more thing to keep track of administratively. I would, I would, my preference. And my recommendation would be that it all stays with PARS. But it's your, it's city councils uh purview to to make whatever motion you would like.
And Kenan, any thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, I concur with Ron that uh for simplicity's sake and in working with one representative, it's easier to have it with one agency. Uh, and therefore, I I see that, but I have no problem if the council would like to split those up. Again, it's much easier to work with one agency and to be able to have, when we come back to the council, have a single agency present those reports. In a cohesive uh format and document, uh, and so that's why I would recommend that.
The only reason I like what what the mayor Pretend has proposed is that we have, we we have kind of our our. Our thumbs on the pulse of each group. Um. When they come back and issue reports. But I'm, 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 I'm not. I'm indifferent. So I'll need a motion to either um. Go with what the uh Mayor Pretend Shapiro is suggesting or with what isn't the staff report. Is there a motion for one of those?
I'll make the motion that uh I recommended. I'm happy to do it. I I did that as opposed to saying all to CalPERS or let's. Discuss this one when it's not so late after a very long meeting with closed session. So we could really delve into some of the inquiries that were brought up. And I just think it's a rational solution.
I think after hearing from Kenan and Ron, though, I can't second that.
Okay, so do you have a separate motion?
I would make a motion that we uh invest the money with PARS.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wasaja.
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub.
I'm gonna be abstaining on this item.
Mayor Pretend Shapiro.
I'm gonna abstain as well, rather than vote no, which is my inclination.
Mayor Maurer.
Aye.
Carrie's three two.
Okay. All right, cool. I put my agenda away. Um, information reports, check registry, any questions about the check registry, anybody? Any members of the public? Any task force reports?
I'll be brief. Oh, go ahead.
I attended the government affairs meeting a week ago, Monday, with the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
City manager, um, anything to report?
Mayor, you do have Councilmember Wasajin that had something to report.
Oh.
But I don't have anything to report once he's done.
Just wanted to uh mention that I attended the Contract Cities BBQ uh put on annually by the Sheriff's Department. Uh, last week in Arcadia. Also, that next week, or in two weeks, we're going. So a couple of us to the League of California Cities Convention in Long Beach, September ninth to September seventh tonight.
Great. And nothing for the city manager to report. All right, um, any requests for future agenda, agenda or information items? Okay, Councilmember Weintraub.
I, I just wanted to make sure that we have on the agenda about the county charter amendment. Regarding the special election that will allow voters to decide on an amendment to the county's charter. That would grant the board of supervisors the authority to.
Yes, it is in September, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. And then my other thing is, I'm starting to hear from residents who have been dropped from their fire insurance. So I've reached out to um Senator Stern and Assembly Member Erwin and Kenan and Michael. McConville are helping to get in touch and with um Matt's help, get in touch with the Insurance Commissioner. But if other residents are having that concern to share that with us. But it's just something that we're gonna have to address and get more information because I've heard it from multiple residents in completely different areas of the city. And they're not getting much help from um the insurance, the State Department. So just something that we should get involved in. I think the goal would be to have a um. Like a town hall meeting with the Insurance Commissioner so that residents can hear what she has to say and the Insurance Commissioner can hear what our residents are experiencing.
Good. Um, they're not even qualifying for the, is it the fair plan or the the?
I guess the fair, the fair plan, from what I understand, and I. Matt, you're gonna, might have told me, it doesn't provide the same amount of coverage that they had previously.
Yeah.
Yeah, just uh two seconds on it. Uh, residents needing help should contact staff in the interim, but the fair plan is available anywhere in the state. State mandated program, however, it is just for fire insurance, not the other pieces that are typically insured in a home insurance. And it can be significantly more expensive than commercial insurance.
That's terrible.
But it is an option.
Okay. Um, all right, that's, that's really not good news, especially as we approach fire season. All right, I wanna um congratulate all of us on the work we've done tonight. It's late, but we have two. Uh, three terrific proposals moving forward, actually, yeah, three. So congratulations to all of us. Thank you. Again, Kenan, Erica, um, Ron, thank you, and everyone have a good evening, drive safely home. Good night.
Night.
Night.